Calling the meeting to order for the May 23, 2017 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Any questions on consent calendar from the dais? I see none. This time, I'm going to present a proclamation to our Public Works. That would be Mr. Webb. Would you please tell the audience again just who you are and what your department does before I read the proclamation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. My name's Dave Webb, the Director of Public Works, and I am really fortunate and thankful today that we have an opportunity to take a little time out and recognize our infrastructure of the city, and the National Public Works Association has set this week aside to do that throughout the nation, and for you to have an opportunity to look at that. And thank you for that effort. And also, I want to take a time to thank all the men and women that are in the world of public works. A lot of them are pretty quiet folks and don't bring the flashlight to themselves, but they're out there doing vital jobs for you. I was thinking about this morning, which I should more, I'm in the business, but I don't, that I turned on the shower and the water came out and it went down a hole and luckily it didn't go into the bay or a creek to pollute it, it went to a treatment plant that cleaned it. I drove relatively easy to work today, the freeway was clear, the bridges didn't fall down, the signals all worked, but I thought about in other countries where that doesn't work and how it delays your life, and it really is the foundation of our economic society in this city. So I'm just thankful and that we could take a little time today to recognize that.
Agreed, so many things to take advantage of. Sorry, we take for granted, excuse me. We do take advantage of that, too, though.
It happens, we know.
Whereas, public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives and serves as a foundation to society, and whereas, the support of and understanding and informed citizenry and elected officials is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets and highways, waters, sewers, harbors and waterways, transportation systems, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas, the public health, safety, value, and comfort of the city depends upon these public works facilities and services. Whereas, the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction, and operation are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the public works and municipal operations manager and staff. And whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works and municipal operations department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas, the year 2017 marks the 57th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, with this year's theme being "Public Works Connects Us." Now, therefore, I, Kevin Muldoon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st to the 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, quick photo?
If I could ask the managers of Public Works and municipal operations and other folks who are here, public works officials, come on down and join in a picture, that'd be great.
Anyone like to make any comments about the department and the heads that were just up here? Yes, Councilwoman Dixon?
Sure, thank you. Congratulations to the Public Works Department, Dave Webb, and your team. Thank you for capably managing a $60-65 million budget every year to keep the traffic lights working and the water flowing through our sewers and all that you do, so thank you so much. And I think I mentioned at the last meeting or the meeting before last that your department, the city, was recognized on behalf of the American Public Works Association for Marina Park in our District One, so I'm very proud of that. So again, congratulations for a job well done, appreciate it.
You, Councilman Avery.
Yeah, I'm, as everyone knows, relatively new to council, and I've had a pretty good tour of Public Works and have worked with Dave and Mark and many of the other staff, but I am just, I am so grateful that we have such a great team in Public Works, not only as a city council person, but just as a resident. We're just so fortunate to live in a town that's just so excellent in many ways, but Public Works to me is amazing what gets done in this town, and the constant pressure that's on that team, I've come to know, and just their professionalism, dealing with that pressure and delivering for residents, is beyond, it's really something. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Herdman?
Well, I'm new to the council, but I'm not new to Public Works. I served as President of the Balboa Island Improvement Association for five years and the Little Island Property Owners Association for almost 10 years, and that caused me to interact with Dave Webb and his staff on a pretty regular basis. In fact, I give them credit in large part for me making the decision to run for city council, because I so enjoyed my working relationship with them, I wanted it continued, and I also wanted to be in a position to be able to support them. So let me just say that this award is certainly well deserved and well earned. Thank you.
So most candidates run because they're angry about potholes, but in Newport Beach, they run because they're so happy with Public Works. It's pretty unique.
That's right.
Any other comments? All right, see none, thank you. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor Muldoon and members of the council. I am joined tonight by Deputy Police Chief Dennis Birch, City Traffic Engineer Tony Brien, and next to City Attorney Aaron Harp is Deputy City Attorney Kyle Bevan, and they are all working on oceanfront issues with me these days. The oceanfront is that three-mile concrete walkway that stretches from approximately from East Street to 36th Street in the Balboa Peninsula. Our oceanfront or our boardwalk is slightly different than some of the others you see in California, is that we have homes and businesses directly adjacent to one side of our boardwalk, and of course, the beach is on the other side. It's one of our most popular recreation features in the city, no question about that, but it's also seen as kind of a transportation route from one end of the peninsula to the other. We often see our junior guards and schoolchildren commuting along the oceanfront or the boardwalk. We've looked at this issue for a number of years, at least 25 years, and some of the concerns we hear from the community are that they see boardwalk users exceeding the posted speed limit. Some of those users these days are distracted by their mobile devices or just talking to friends. We've got a lot of uses in a limited space out there. We've got about 12 feet of concrete, and we've got cyclists and skaters and pedestrians and joggers. We also have Surry cycles that continue to be seen on the boardwalk, even though they're currently by code not allowed on the boardwalk. Every now and then, we do see a Surry up on the boardwalk, and residents are talking that they see a lot of new technology, proliferation of motorized devices. I actually saw a motorized scooter myself the other day on the boardwalk. And we hear about some of the Segway tour groups, just their size and sometimes they're intimidating to pedestrians. Section 12.54 is sort of, most of where our regulations for the boardwalk reside in Section 12.54, and this is where we see the unsafe operation, the condition about the speed limit prohibits motorized scooters, and actually, primarily, it requires users of the boardwalk to follow the rules of the road. There are others, there are other areas of the code that regulate uses on the boardwalk. We see in 12.56, that's where Surry cycles and pedicabs are prohibited. 12.57 actually prohibits skateboards and scooters, including the little razors that you see children use. And 12.64 actually also pertains to the boardwalk, and that prohibits motorized vehicles on the boardwalk. To summarize what's currently allowed and what's currently not allowed, what's currently allowed, of course, are pedestrians and bicycles, rollerblades and roller skaters, segways or EPAMD is essentially a mobility-assisted device. What's not specifically allowed are the Surrys, skateboards, motorized devices, excuse me, motorized scooters, and motorcycles or minibikes. What's not addressed currently in our municipal code are e-bikes and hoverboards, segways actually aren't specifically addressed, therefore, they're allowed, because they're not excluded in the code, therefore, because the code is silent on that, they are allowed on the boardwalk. And of course, future technology, we don't know what next will be invented that we'll be seeing out there. During the past year, we actually spoke to the council last June about this issue, and one of the items council said, looking to further, was perhaps some infrastructure changes. And one of those changes we looked at is, could we, could we work on the end of the boardwalk from East Street to G Street? And staff did spend some time this year working on that, talked to the community at least one town hall meeting, but since that time, there's some habitat, actually, at the end of the East Street, and we've heard some community opposition to that idea, so we've put that infrastructure change on the table for now. And Tony Brien, our City Traffic Engineer, is going to talk to you about some of the other things we've been looking at this year.
Yes, last summer, at the request of residents, we went out and collected some pedestrian bicycle counts in addition to the other uses on the boardwalk, and we did it in each direction, and I'll go through it very quickly, but we did counts on a Sunday, we did them on a Monday. You can see the total number of users, 6,500 approximately users on the Sunday, that's the daily number, and you'll see again, when you look at it, that bikes versus pedestrians on each day roughly, maybe two to one approximately, bikes versus pedestrians, and you can see the difference of 6,500 for a Sunday weekend use to about 20, I'm sorry, 2,700 for a Monday use, so those are the quick numbers to look at, and then you can glance at the Surrys, skateboards, roller skates, et cetera. And we collected speeds, I would say that these are fairly accurate, they're not exact to the extent that you can collect speeds on people on bikes and Surrys and rollerblades, et cetera, but those are just, give you a general idea of speeds on, primarily on the We do have, from 36th Street down to East Street, we have approximately 120 signs located on streetlights and other locations for the beach crossings, and you can see the different ones that we have. We sometimes find that these signs are missing, I would say definitely, the beach crossing signs that you see on the left is a fairly popular sign that people like to add to their collections, so that's a sign that we have to go and replace on time to time, but that's part of the program that we're recommending here, is to go back, make sure we inventory the signs that are there, and replace any signs that are missing. This is the segment of Balboa Boulevard from East Street to G Street, and essentially, the boardwalk ends at E Street, so for any of the bicyclists or other users that want to continue down to the wedge, they come out onto Balboa here, and it's a fairly narrow roadway, it's about 40 feet from curb to curb, and there is parking on both sides, so we don't have the room right now to try and organize the cyclist and stripe an on-street bike lane, we simply don't have the room to do that and keep a travel lane. And also, it's currently marked on the sidewalks at the corners for no bicycle riding on sidewalks, and that's another concern that some of the residents have, is the bicyclist on the sidewalk, and we do see that. So there are a couple of solutions that we could look at doing for this segment of Balboa, and one is to do the Cheryl markings, you can see the Cheryl marking to the right. We've used those in different areas around the city, and they're primarily used to provide the information to the driver that it's a shared roadway for the cyclist and the other users. And another option here, if we wanted to look at doing this to better organize the bicyclists, is to actually remove the on-street parking and actually go ahead and stripe a bike lane where that on-street parking is, but that's just something to consider, that's a potential option. Comparison of our city standard bike path with what the existing oceanfront boardwalk is, the standard plan that we have is essentially for a roadway or a facility that has heavy bike and pedestrian use, that calls for a 12-foot wide facility, and that's exactly what the oceanfront boardwalk is. So that's the information that I have to present to you, and we'll move over to the Police Department.
Hi there, I'm here to talk to you a little bit about what we do out there, and we see the boardwalk as part of our larger presence down there in the oceanfront and the peninsula, generally speaking. The boardwalk's a part of that, and the lead group for that is our Peninsula Enforcement Team, our bike officers, and you've seen them out and about, and they do a number of things to include boardwalk enforcement, boardwalk safety enforcement. And over the last year, from May 1 of '16 to April 30 of '17, they wrote 271 citations specific to the boardwalk, and you see the breakdown of what those 271 citations were in terms of our activity and enforcement activity on the boardwalk in particular. Our oceanfront presence, if you will, to include the beach and all the other activity we do out there, beach use hours, dog use on the beach, you know, at the different areas, alcohol violations, so forth, for that same period of time was over 1,600 citations in that oceanfront area, and again, that's generally speaking, the boardwalk on all the way out to the water, to the waterline. So our folks out there, in particular, the Peninsula Enforcement Team, but our regular officers, too, are out there doing a lot of enforcement, that presence out there isn't just specifically tasked to the boardwalk, but we have been actually very focused over the last year with council's direction, you know, to get back and engaged out there, and part of that was the Peninsula Enforcement Team that we brought back, I think about two years ago or so, and so we've been out doing a lot of enforcement. The other thing we've been doing, probably for about the last three months or so, is put together, and I'll call it an ambassador program, but we've got a group of civilian professional staff that go out there three to seven days a week, depending on our staffing levels, and get out on the boardwalk and hand out these information flyers, they're out there for directions, provide information on facilities, restaurants, and whatnot, if folks have those questions. We're also educating them and stopping them if they're moving a little bit fast, letting them know about the speed limits, the prohibit, prohibitions on the boardwalk, and, you know, generally, just to be a good neighbor out there and take care of each other on the boardwalk. And they're handing out these pamphlets to encourage folks to, just to, at the end of the day, respect each other out on the boardwalk and try to get a little bit more compliance with some of these things that, you know, are nuanced to include the Surrys and some of these other motorized vehicles that are out there. So we've been doing that for the last three months, we've gotten some positive feedback on that, we look to increase that as the summer months approach, but we've been consistently out there doing that for the last three months or so with some positive feedback.
Yes.
Thank you, Dennis. Could you talk about what they do exactly? Are they just handing out brochures, the ambassadors, or what kind of interaction are they having with people on the boardwalk?
Talking to people walking, excuse me for interrupting, but talking to people, engaging them up at the base of the pier primarily, but they're all up and down the boardwalk. If we see somebody that's maybe violating a rule or one of the laws, the speed laws or skateboarding, they're engaging them, but they're not, they don't have enforcement powers, so they're really more educational, and like I say, we call it an ambassador program, letting people know that, hey, we're out here, these are the rules, and we need your help to abide by that. So really, they don't have enforcement powers, but it's trying to increase our visibility out there, and again, gain compliance and educate to go along with the enforcement that we're doing that I mentioned previously. It depends on who we have available to us, so some days just two, some days a few more, some days they're engaged with the bike unit and the pet team, you know, so we'll have enforcement with the education piece, and it really just depends on who we have available to us. So some days we don't have any, some days we're not able to do it, but we have been out there usually at least three or four days a week at a minimum, on the weekends, too, yes, ma'am. And then, moving forward, next steps, we do look to increase our presence there, we are in the process of getting more bikes for our professional staff to get out there so we can increase the visibility, and we're working on that right now, and hopefully have a little bit more of a presence, particularly as summer kicks off here in the next few months. So that's the next steps, we'd like to continue this, I think certainly our volunteer folks that are out there enjoy their time out there, and I think they're having an impact, and be interested to see what the feedback on that is.
So council, as we continue to work on this issue, our suggested path at this time would be to definitely go in and do a code cleanup of that section of 12.54, the section of our municipal code that pertains to the boardwalk. We'd like to incorporate every year, I shouldn't, out of abbreviating, excuse me, CVC stands for California Vehicle Code, every year, the CVC is updated with new definitions, you know, new technologies that are out there, the code incorporates those. We would like our municipal code to reflect those definitions, so it's very clear for our officers when they are writing citations and there are spotting issues on the boardwalk. We'd also like to pull everything, every other reference to the boardwalk from the other sections of our municipal code, so everything lives, at least is referenced in that one area, Section 12.54. And the other thing we're asking for your thoughts on is, staff is recommending that we flip our approach, so to speak. Currently, our municipal code says what's not allowed on the boardwalk, so therefore, when something new is introduced, the code is silent on those issues until we specifically go back and prohibit it. Where our approach that we're recommending is to write into the code what is allowed on the boardwalk, and then when a new technology is invented, we can come back to the council and say, council, should this also be allowed up on the boardwalk for users to enjoy or We also would like to work some more with the business owners. My preliminary discussion with at least one of the Segway tour operators was they would be open to entering some kind of agreement with us. We're not looking at regulating individual Segway use, it's more the tour groups that the residents tell us they feel at times intimidated by, that they're too big, so we'd like to work with these business owners to talk about certain routes and maybe hours that they can operate out there, make sure they're all governed or they're obeying the eight mile per hour speed limit. And then Surrys, I had the, I was able to go out this weekend and talk to some of the shop owners about the Surrys, and the discussion has been, should we ban Surrys citywide? They're currently not allowed on the boardwalk, but we still see them up there. The Police Department gets concerned because when they're not on the boardwalk, they often are on the street, and we're not sure that's a good spot for them either. So I started that discussion with some of the shop owners, but we feel it merits more time and some more specific discussions with them. Perhaps if we sat down at a table with them, they might help us to come up with some good ideas, what we can do currently with the Surrys, they might have some better thoughts on how we can keep folks from being on the boardwalk, so we'd like to do that, and also review some of the current regulations we have with them. I also heard from some of the shop owners that some of our regulations are cumbersome, so I'd like to hear some more about that from them. So we'd like to work on this some more and try our ambassador program, try our pet team, our Peninsula Enforcement Team, work with these store owners, perhaps come back to you with a good Segway tour agreement, and try that for two summers to see if we can try to get some of the boardwalk issues to calm down a bit. And that concludes my presentation for this, at this time.
Thank you. Questions from the dais?
My-
Or comments?
Madam Clerk, my screen is not working, so I can't push a button, but thank you, staff, thank you, Tara. A couple of questions, did you have a chance to do any comparative analysis with other coastal cities? Oh, is that it? Helps to have a techie right next to me. Thank you. Santa Monica, Huntington Beach, how do they manage their vehicle and pedestrian populations, do you know, or anecdotally, do you know?
It's challenging, because nearly every boardwalk or every city has a different situation than we do. You know, Long Beach now has a separate bike path, Santa Monica, oh, excuse me, we're talking about Venice Beach, I believe theirs is also separated in certain areas. Huntington Beach has a bike path, but it's far away from homes and businesses, so they don't have the cross traffic like we do on our boardwalk. That's something somewhat unique to us, is our street ends and many of our homes, their front porches open up onto the boardwalk, so sometimes excited children will just dash out right across the boardwalk. So we do have a list, and I can actually provide that to the council, unfortunately, I did not bring it here, of what other cities have in terms of their boardwalks, what they look like, but very few of them ban outright uses, some of them regulate uses.
I actually did my own boardwalk bike tour last Sunday, from one end to the other, and on a beautiful Sunday, and I saw a number of Surrys, I saw some skateboards, electric bikes, I see the gamut, and I think to Tony's point about signage, I think there's a, we have too many signs, there's a plethora of signs, and it's just, we could probably look at more effective communications on what is permitted, to your point, I like your proposed change. I know we've got a number of residents here who've been anxious for years, and I inherited this anxiety when I became council member, that there have been studies, and you're aware of these, Tara, for many years, to do something to bring some relief, so I'll be anxious when we're finished up here to hear from the public comments, because I know residents have a lot of good ideas. Okay, thank you.
Councilman O'Neal.
How does the Americans with Disabilities Act interplay with what we're talking about right now, and particularly, I know you mentioned segways as a potential regulatory issue, but my understanding is that the Department of Justice, probably six or seven years ago, specifically called out segways as something that can be used, so I'm wondering, even if we ban segways, first off, I assume it would be preempted under federal law that folks would, under the ADA, would be permitted, and second, how exactly would we enforce it? Walk up to someone and say, excuse me, are you covered by the ADA? Right? I mean, there's an enforcement mechanism that I'm a little concerned about when we start banning things, so I'm curious how that works with things like the ADA.
I think those are good questions. The ADA is an exception to the general rule, so you'd have to have a provision there that basically allowed them to use the segways if they're using it because they have a disability. And then when it comes into inquiring about whether or not they're using a Segway for a disability, you are allowed to ask, you know, why they're using the Segway, but if they respond that they're using it because they have a disability, then you basically are foreclosed from asking additional questions at that point. And the law goes even further, they use an example that says, just because you see someone walking and it looks like they're mobile and they're using a Segway, it still doesn't mean that they're not disabled, so you basically just have to take their answer, and that's the end of the inquiry.
And at this time, we were not proposing a ban on individual Segway or EPAMD use, we were more interested in working with the tour operators to see what we can do to kind of get our arms more around the tour groups that were using the segways, but of course...
Normore, thank you, I've seen them myself, you know, 10 or 12 people in a snake path down the boardwalk with the segways, and Mr. O'Neal is absolutely right, and the city has not prohibited segways as long as segways have been on the boardwalk, but how can we work with the companies that are renting them, the Segway renter companies, so that they follow some basic rules of the road, which is what you've understood, or you've told me, that other cities do that, so they're already complying with other permits in other cities?
They are, and as I kind of briefly mentioned earlier, in past conversations, the Segway tour operators were not opposed to putting some rules in place, they actually liked that idea to sort of level the playing field in case other outside groups wanted to trailer in a group of segways and offer tours, that way everyone will be operating under the same conditions and the same agreed areas. They were open to talking about specific routes, time of day, group size in particular. I noticed in several cities, they limit the group size to eight participants at a time. So those are some conditions we would want to talk to them about and see if they'd be open to enter an agreement with us, with those conditions included.
Councilman Herdman?
Tara, just an anecdotal comment about pointing out to boardwalk users what's allowed versus what's not allowed. Take this for what it's worth, all right? At the last two schools that I was principal at, we took a reverse approach on school ru- schools that I was principal at, we took a reverse approach on school rules, and we did exactly that. We told the kids what they could do versus what they couldn't do, which school rules typically do, and the results were phenomenal. Really, really positive. The other thing I want to, I want to reinforce what Councilwoman Dixon said just a minute ago about signage. I live on Babo Island. We have similar problems on our boardwalk. We have skateboards on the boardwalk. Our biggest problem is animal droppings, all right, and people not cleaning up. I don't know if that's a problem on the peninsula boardwalk or not. But I, one day, when I was president of the Babo Island Improvement Association, did a walk around the island, and I counted the number of signs that tell people what they can't do. And I, within, just on the South Bayfront, I counted 72 signs. There's just a proliferation of signage in some areas. I counted 72 signs on Marine Avenue on Babo Island telling people what they cannot do. Sometimes I think we overdo it on this, and we don't point out what they can do enough, what is allowed. So I thought that, I think that's an excellent strategy. Thank you.
Councilman Piotr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the question would be is, Tara, you kind of touched on it. In other cities, I'm not saying that this is what we would want to advocate here, but in other cities, they actually split the pedestrian and the bicycle or motorized vehicles apart. Is that typical? You said Long Beach, Santa Monica, Venice, all have basically two boardwalks, right? One for pedestrians, one for vehicles?
Correct. At least in certain areas, they do. They're able to separate that traffic in certain areas.
And even in our cross traffic situation, because normally the bicycle path is further away from the homes and closer to the beach, even our cross traffic would be crossing a pedestrian only walkway first, which would kind of wake them up to the cross traffic before they have to cross a bicycle path. I know it's not a popular thing, but boy, getting all those bicycles off of the roadways and onto the boardwalk, as long as you didn't have these conflicts between pedestrians and bicycles, would make sense from a traffic standpoint. I presume Tony would agree with that. Getting maybe bike lanes back on the roads for vehicles.
Well, we've heard various comments each way. Some people like the idea of separating out the bikes. Some people have commented that it may end up with a situation where the bicycles are riding much faster, and that may not be a safe situation. So it's a various, you know, the comments we've received can go either way on that.
But from a roadway standpoint, having the roads be for vehicles, having a pedestrian separated from bicycle lanes makes sense, assuming that you can get over some of the hurdles, you know. You know, people don't like the idea of an extra boardwalk out there too, because it'll increase traffic, because it'll bring it off the roadways and then in front of people's homes too. So I'm not sure we want to do it. Question for you on the Suris. Can we actually outlaw them altogether, or would they be allowed to be on the roadways if we didn't provide for them on the bike lanes or on the boardwalk? Can they legally just go on the roads as a vehicle, and we can't stop them?
Suris can be on the roadway. The problem, but there's a little nuance to it. I mean, if they're impeding traffic and they amount to a vehicle as big as they are and whatnot, the slow-moving nature of them and the hazard that they tend to present, they can be cited depending on the nature of what they're doing. So the answer is yes and no.
So we really can't outlaw them, but if they become a nuisance, we can heavily regulate them. So, I mean, I would be in favor of outlawing Suris, because I don't see very many of them from the perspective of legality, and they are very difficult to accommodate in our bicycle lanes, or at least making them illegal in the bicycle lanes and the boardwalk. I don't know what Councilman Dixon has in mind, whether she wants to do a study and talk about what other cities have done, and maybe have a separate bicycle lane on the beach or not, or are we just going to go over a prohibited list here and that's the extent of it? But anyway, those are some of my thoughts. Thanks.
All right. I don't see any comments at this time. Staff, complete with this report. Thank you. Public comments? If you'd like to make a public comment, please come up to the podium. We can have two groups in lines at opposing podiums. And please state your name for the record.
My name is Fred Levine. I'm a resident for over 30 years on the peninsula. I want to make a couple of statements in reference to this study. I would prefer the study be done Saturday and Sunday. Monday is the quietest day at the beach. That's just for your knowledge. Second, I've been talking about this probably for two or three years, and seen a tremendous amount of accidents on the peninsula. It's very hard to have tens of thousands of people mix in with motorized vehicles, whether it be segways, reference to segways. If they're for disabled, we should give them a plaque like we take for parking. And I hold the owners responsible for that rather than just renting or leasing them to anyone. There's an enormous amount of vehicles that are motorized, whether it be gas-motorized, pedal and battery-operated. We really have to take a look at this for public safety. There's an enormous amount of, between animals and children running around and having these vehicles running there between 15 and 20 miles an hour. It doesn't make sense why we keep talking about the same thing. There's an enormous amount of accidents that are happening, underreported. I don't know why the council would come up with some ideas like, maybe we should outlaw some of the motorized vehicles immediately. I don't, and I don't want any of the businesses to get hurt, but it's not a business thing. It's more of a safety issue. Someone, please come down during the weekend, not on a Monday, but a Saturday and Sunday, and see what's there. You don't even have enough room to walk the boardwalk, no less have vehicles in and out between skateboards, motorized vehicles, segways. It doesn't make sense to me. I live down there. I want everyone to have fun. I know the idea, this is a beach, the city council, city commission. It doesn't, I just don't understand how to get further on this. My suggestion, more enforcement. I know the police department has done a great job, but I hear they only can enforce up to a certain thing. Maybe it takes the council to give them the powers to stop this lunacy on the beach, on the boardwalk. I would welcome you, come to my house, I live right on oceanfront, between 14th, 15th, you'll have a great lunch. Sit there and spend one weekend, couple of days, sitting with me, and see, you won't believe what goes on. All the studies are great, but we really have to take a realistic view of this and say, "Let's look at the safety for the public, not only the residents, but the visitors that are coming down that deserve a safe atmosphere." I don't know why we keep going round and round about this. Can we disown this? Can we, yes. The segways in reference to that, that is for disabled. I haven't seen, well, that's not true. Two years ago, I saw one disabled person on a Segway, one. The rest of them, they're running around with tours. Let them make a lot of money, but it shouldn't be at the expense of the city, and the expense of the visitors and the residents that use the boardwalk. That's supposed to be done for bicycles and walking and having fun. It's the 405. I keep saying that between the beginning and the end of the boardwalk from pier to pier. That's what I have to say. I hope it's not going on deaf ears.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I really need this to go further. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Buzz Lowry. I also live on the oceanfront down on 8th Street. I've been there now for 30 years. And what I want to talk about is a safety aspect. We heard a report from the police that there were 271 citations given. Only 15 of those were for speed. Up until a couple of years ago, I would agree, the Suris were an issue, the segways were an issue, and the problem with those seems to have subsided significantly. The problem I see out there right now are these electric bikes. My wife and I, last Sunday, in preparation of this, took a little survey of the vehicles going by from noon until 3:00 in front of our house on 8th Street there. There were no Suris, no segways. There were nine electric bikes, and every one of those bikes were going, I'm going to say, 15, 18 miles an hour. We yell at them, "Stop, slow down." And these guys smile at us, or they'll give us hand signals going by. And most of the people who are on these electric bikes are young people. There are young people on here going 15 miles an hour. I think the boardwalk's out there for people to walk, to stroll, maybe to pedal. Why does somebody need to go from pier to pier on an electric bike? If they want to do that, go get your car out, or go have Uber move you from here to there. The electric bike problem there is a huge problem. The city is going to become liable for a significant accident. The Suris are a slow-moving item out there. There's very few of them. That's not the concern. The segways have got under concern. There's some good thoughts there. There were some suggestions about the electric bike. I don't understand what was said on that. The police who tried to do something on this, I've seen the guys on these bikes. You can see where I live, way down the end of the boardwalk, you can see a police officer on a bike. So you know he's coming. They slow down. So that's probably why there's only 15 citations for speeding, unless we want to have the police sit out there with the little guns and do it that way, and have a whole different approach to try to stop it. Why not ban the electric bikes? I think when they put those signs up a long time ago and put all the "noes" up there, and I like the idea, it's about what we should do, not the "noes," but there was no motor vehicles. Back then, we didn't have electric bikes. If we did, they weren't used on the boardwalk. If we did, I think the people who originated those signs would have said, "No, motorized and electric bikes." So my suggestion is, for the safety of all of us, let's ban that now. Thank you.
For the record, you meant radar gun, not handgun. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Maureen Cotton. I live at 206 15th Street, and I concur with very a lot of what Buzz had to say. As you guys indicated in your survey, 15 people were cited for speeding, although it was noted that the average speed of the 884 vehicles, not vehicles, bicycles, was 9.5 miles per hour, 9.4 miles per hour, which means the average, 400 people, on average, and probably a lot higher, were going more than eight miles per hour, and yet only 15 people were cited. That's a problem. That's a huge problem. You guys have to acknowledge, if the average speed on your own survey for bicycles was nine-plus miles per hour, the enforcement isn't happening. And so the only way to deal with that, as Tara indicated, is we have to create ordinances that apply to the boardwalk. And in that, Class 1 and Class 2 bicycles, in addition to Class 3, which are already prohibited, need to be eliminated. Assembly Bill 604 allows that now. A city can make that determination, that electric bikes just don't work on this particular path. It's not banning it for the whole city. It's saying, "On this path, we can't have it. It's not safe." You've heard from people, you're going to hear from more. I sent out a letter to the members of the peer-to-peer group, our membership, and I had dozens of emails back from people saying, "I can't make today's meeting, but it's really important that people understand that motorized and electric bicycles don't belong, and other electric, non-human-powered vehicles don't belong there. There are children with parents with strollers and toddlers. It's really dangerous." Well, I can't imagine you bringing your family down there and feeling comfortable going the distance along the boardwalk with them. You really wouldn't on a weekend. And the police do what they can, but they are limited to the resources that they have. So you really, I agree with code cleanup, and I think that it's important that the city really look at banning electric bikes, Class 1 and Class 2, in addition to Class 3, on the boardwalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Denise Oberman, resident at West 12th Street and Oceanfront. I agree with everything that Ms. Cotton just relayed. This issue of boardwalk safety and the Oceanfront boardwalk is a very circuitous issue, and I realize that we have largely new members of council and some newer members of staff. This issue has been going around for at least eight years, and Dave Kiv can correct me if that understates it. So, motorized vehicles, there are now at least 11 types of motorized vehicles that are operating on a regular basis on the boardwalk. Some are within the auspices of commercial tours, some are individual rentals. All of those vehicles are going in excess of eight miles an hour. It's tough to operate a motorized vehicle at less than eight miles an hour. So our boardwalk, in contrast to other benchmark cities such as Huntington Beach, or Santa Monica, or San Diego, is a fraction of the width of those areas. I appreciate the idea that there may be a 30-year vision that another boardwalk could come up, if and when it could ever get through coastal, and if and when our property owners would want to have that additional traffic. The reality is, we have something that would function very well as a non-motorized bike-ped walkway, but also have the skaters and others. So there's plenty of population that's going to fill up those boardwalks, and that's difficult enough to navigate through and contend with for anybody that is walking, jogging, riding their bikes. As to this ADA issue, if we look at, for example, Huntington Beach prohibits all motorized vehicles on their minimum 20-foot-wide walkway that does not have residential uses immediately along the boardwalk. They're not worried about handicap, because handicap people can demonstrate that they're handicaps. So let's just quit kidding ourselves. The commercial Segway tour operators are renting and guiding people, whoever wants to rent when they're on. There are people that are too young to legally operate a motorized vehicle. There are people, most of the people cannot operate a Segway safely. Those things are very difficult to steer, and I would encourage each of you to try to get on one. So let's do something that is in the public safety, and also that restores our boardwalk as an attractive place to truly exercise and not have all these gimmicks. For residents, and also the cities trying to stimulate tourism. I will tell you, people come to visit and vacation, or whether they're here for the weekend, they go to that boardwalk and they leave the boardwalk because it is not pleasant, and it's not even feasible to walk there after about 10:00 in the morning, particularly on the weekends. Lastly, please, just to have a minute. Relative to signage, I concur with all the comments that have been made as to signage. Newport Beach does need to overhaul the signage along the boardwalks instead of just sticking little stickers up every time a new ordinance is added. There are lots of fantastic, informative, clear, aesthetically pleasing solutions to signage. I do like the idea of what is allowed. We also do have a universal symbol that can be available for not allowed. But take some of our great minds and just do an overhaul on the signage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. If you plan on, if you intend on speaking on the side end, please come up now and form a line at the opposing podium.
My name is Joe Welke. I live on 25th Street on Newport Beach. First of all, I'd like to say that last April, my girlfriend was walking on a beach, and a girl in a bicycle hit her in the back. She fell down. She broke her menotosa bone. She was laying there on the ground, and the little girl, and the girl looked at her and says, "Well, I was on the phone. I was texting somebody." And then she got on her bike and rode away. She just left her there on the ground. She didn't do anything to it, didn't do anything to help her or nothing. And then yesterday, she was walking, her and I were both walking down the beach, and a guy was coming down this way, and all of a sudden, you know, of course, there's arrows. You're supposed to walk this way if an arrow's pointing that way, and you walk this way if an arrow's pointing that way. And when you walk on a boardwalk, like I heard, you said the street is 12 feet, or the walkway's 12 feet. I'll have to measure. I'll take a 10 measure. I'll measure myself. But I told my girlfriend, she stood next to me, and I stood here. The yellow line was right here, and she was kind of right on the edge of the thing. So to me, that isn't six feet. I think about three feet, maybe. Anyway, that guy turned around and almost hit her, and she jumped off the ground. I mean, she jumped off the sidewalk and under the ground. She started yelling at the guy, and the guy kind of turned around, you know, and ran and left. But anyway, I run down that boardwalk almost every day. I go from 35th Street down to the dead end, whatever that's north or east, that's on the east side there. I run back and forward. And when people walk, you know, they don't just walk like this straight. It's like...
You've got to stay by the microphone, otherwise nobody at home hears you.
Okay. Well, everybody kind of, you know, walks a little tilted a little bit. Same with riding a bike. You don't ride a bike and you're not in a straight line like this. You know, everybody's going about like this. So when I'm running or... So when I'm running or if I'm walking, there's a bunch of bikes behind me. Nobody sets their signal off or rings a bell or passing on your left or don't say anything to me. So if, you know, if I just happen to take an inch or two inches this way, boom, the bike might hit me. And it's that simple. And, you know, I know they're not supposed to have skateboards. They just have hundreds of skateboards. You know, I probably go by 50 skateboarders when I'm running, but I don't mind skateboards because every time when I go over the crack on a sidewalk, at least I can hear them coming. Soon as I hear the noise coming from behind me, I turn around and look, and it's a skateboarder. So then I make sure I get as far right as I can to let him go by. A lot of the bikes are quiet, never even hear them. And same with that, a lot of these people, you know, they're bikers our age, and we haven't ridden, a lot of the people haven't rode bikes since they've been kids. So, you know, they try to ride a bike, and I had seen people fall off. Couple of times, you know, they fell off in the dirt with the bike, just fell by themselves. They lost control. So, I mean, you know, we've got to do something about it, and I agree with what everybody said, but, you know, we can't just talk about it. We've got to do something about it. You know, I suggest, you've got to separate the bikes and the walkers. I don't care what anybody says. That's the only way it's going to make it safe because you can't put them together. You know, there's some bikers that are good, some walkers that are good, and then nobody knows, there's laws or common sense on the boardwalk. So if they'll walk with six people across here, they'll block everything. They're in your way. They don't know anything about it. I'm not going to say that, you know, you've got to stand your side, and some people will stop, take a picture, the arrow's pointing this way, and they get the whole thing filled up, you're six or eight people here, they're taking a picture of a house. You know, what's going to happen then?
Thank you.
Yeah, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you. The speakers, please come up. Sir, in the back, if you want to speak, could you please come to the other podium and form a line?
Yes. Mayor Boldeon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I just wanted to remind you of what I thought was one of the most sensible and simple comments I heard regarding the speed problem. I think the suggestion came from Mr. Brian Ozunian, and that was to deploy a few of the interactive speed signs that tell people how fast they're actually going. I think I've understood maybe one of those has been deployed, perhaps more could be. There's no shortage of information telling people that they're going, that they should not go over 8 miles per hour, but most people have no concept of what that is, and I think if they actually saw the speed they were going, they would be more respectful of the limit. Sounded to me like a very good and a very simple, helpful thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, David Maron. I'm a resident of the peninsula. We live on the beach down near East Street. And a couple of things. In terms of Surry's, I'm not sure really what the role for them is. I mean, there's really, they're very dangerous on the boardwalk. I'm not sure I agree with what some other people have said. I mean, they take up an enormous amount of space. They're basically a vehicle that's not motorized, but they're basically an automobile on the boardwalk. I don't think you'd want them on the streets, conversely though, because they take up, as the officer pointed out, a tremendous amount of room, and they don't go very fast, and they're going to be a hindrance to traffic, not to mention being dangerous. And if you've ever watched someone try to turn around on the boardwalk with one of those, it's generally a five-minute affair with, much like a Three Stooges skit. So that's probably something that it'd be great to consider is just banning them completely. Obviously, I know there's businesses that would be affected by that, but still, I think that would be helpful. Secondly, I'm always curious, I didn't realize until I lived down there for a couple of years, that skateboards were even illegal. I'm not a big skateboard rider or anything, but I'm wondering why it was chosen that that vehicle, that mode of transportation is not allowed. I mean, I literally see kids leaving the little school there who get on their skateboards, put their helmet on, and skateboard home. I see people coming to and from work clearly in, you know, work clothing on skateboards. People seem to use that as a mode of transportation. I was wondering why that's illegal. And the last, well, basically, last thing is, I think that this is really an issue of enforcement. If this stuff was enforced, and I know there's resource issues, that would solve a lot of the problems. Ideally, in an ideal world with unlimited resources, there would be a second pathway for vehicles and another pathway for pedestrians, but I know that's probably a very long way off. But like I said, Surry's probably could be eliminated. That would help quite a bit.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Ann Maron. I'm married to that guy. So I also live on the peninsula. I live between E and F Street, and I'm in a unique position to make a suggestion that I actually think will probably save a lot of lives. It's easy to do. So I live right where the bike path ends, and so people, you know, come around onto the sidewalk with their bikes to head down to the wedge. One thing is, the street there is actually fairly safe, but people are so confused about how to get down to the wedge at that point that they just start riding on the sidewalk. On the sidewalk, printed on the ground, are the signs that say, "No bicycles." Well, if you're riding a bike and you look down, you know, you could have an accident. Most people never see those signs, and I know this because I have been walking my dog, and I've had people sort of see me on the sidewalk, and I don't really get out of the way, and then they realize there's a sign there, "Oh, my God," you know. So they don't really see it in time. Secondly, the reason that it's so much safer in the street than on the sidewalk at that point is because we can't see bicyclists in time when we're pulling out in our cars. So, you know, people, I mean, you know, if the bicycle's going fast enough, even if you're creeping out, you know, we can't see them in time. So I think if people were just, you know, if the signs were in a position that they could see it, that they understand this is for their safety, not for our convenience, not for our safety, frankly, it's for their safety, you know, that the streets there are safe, that we understand that they're going to be on the streets riding there down towards the wedge, you know, we're aware of it and we're prepared as motorists for them to make that transition. And I think, you know, that will probably save probably some lives, but at least some citations down the line. That's the other thing is, we never have, I've never, in the two or three years that I've lived there, have not ever seen anyone get cited for riding a bicycle on the sidewalk. And as I said, I'm always thinking, "Oh, God, this is for your safety, especially little kids. This is for your safety. It's so much safer in the street. That's where we expect you to be." So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to say that everybody that's been up here have said some good things. My name is Robert Lerner. I lived here on the oceanfront for 45 years, and I take a bicycle a lot of times, and yes, there's a motorized one go flying past. I think, though, one other thing that's happening, we seem to be having a lot of foreign people here down to the beach, and I don't think they really understand what the signs are saying or using. No, I don't know what the answer is on that one. But then one other comment, Mr. Ozunian Attorney, Balboa Boulevard down there, it's 45 feet wide. I've measured it myself. So it is a little bit wider. And the other thing, the people coming off the boardwalk into the street, they just kind of shooting straight out with ever, not even, there's a sign that says, "Stop," but that doesn't stop them. By the, over by the Newport Pier and the Leifgard area, they have a sign there when there's vehicles flying across, they have a flasher sign. Now, I don't know if that's, might be helpful down at the other end on Balboa Boulevard to let that sign light up. Okay? Thank you.
There's speakers on this item? All right, scene none, I'm going to bring you back to the dais. Are there any comments or questions regarding this today's session item? Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, residents, for coming out today to express your long-held, pent-up feelings, and I share your feelings on this. I think it is time to see some changes and improvements to deal with the speed issues, the congestion issues. So let me just throw out several ideas in response to the presentation. First of all, one item that we didn't spend much time in the presentation that the last speaker just spoke about, last two speakers, the East Street situation. Mr. Ozunian, who is not here, and he did write about this, he lives right at East Street and Balboa Boulevard, and I've been out there with him, and Tony's been out there, so obviously staff is attuned to the issue. There's the vehicle traffic meeting the bicycle traffic that is shooting down that inclined sidewalk that hits East Street, just as the woman described. So Tony, I know you're aware, staff is aware, that we are looking at improvements to that so-called intersection. I don't know if it's a stop sign as much as flashing lights. I think you're looking at that. Also, some of the residents at Peninsula Point have suggested on that sloping sidewalk where the boardwalk ends and the bikes are just shooting into the street, is some kind of bumpy surface material to slow down the bikes, or even I've seen in other cities, I've seen this in New York, I've told Dave about this, big boulders, decorative boulders that are actually placed in the middle of a sidewalk with the intent to slow and stop bicycle traffic. I'm just saying, staff, let's look at ways that we can increase safety coming off the boardwalk onto East Street as it hits Balboa Boulevard. And the resident who spoke about the benefits of putting the shero on the street, that may be the solution. I actually was surprised to hear that because I thought residents would prefer the bikes on the sidewalk for greater safety, but maybe if the drivers are properly warned and advised that there be that shero, and that could be effective. A couple of other things regarding the Surry's. Thank you, Mr. Piattar, about your proposal about doing something about the Surry's, as you say in your presentation, Tara. I'm happy to meet with the Surry company owners, the rental companies. Let's talk and see if there's a solution that can be constructive and create a level playing field for all, and they may come up on their own to say, "We'll take them away from the boardwalk and the peninsula, frankly, because the Surry's are not safe on the streets." But let's work with the owners to come up with a solution that everyone can support. Also, I don't think you did talk about, we've talked about this before, and I know residents care a lot about it, and I experienced this last Sunday, when you're driving into, or on your bike, approaching McFadden Square, Newport Pier area, the boardwalk ends, obviously, because it becomes a parking lot, and the bicyclists are just dispersed into the parking lot with all the incoming vehicle traffic. We need, and I know Public Works has looked at this, and I know you're studying it, I want to just recommend that we accelerate that study. I'm not even talking immediately on infrastructure, structural, physical changes, but can we do something about lane markings to keep the bicycle riders and the pedestrians in designated lane markings? As I was making this entrance into the parking lot at McFadden on Sunday, I had cars coming at me, there are bicycle riders yelling at me, "Watch how where you're going! You're looking at cars coming and going." So we need to do something sooner rather than later if it's just striping until Public Works has a chance to come up with maybe some parking lot reconfiguration. I like the idea of the signs. Let's be positive. Let's say what is allowed. I'm really intrigued with how we're going to deal with motorized vehicles on the boardwalk. I know other cities prohibit motorized mechanical, motorized vehicles. If we should go that far, I'm certainly willing to consider it. I'd like to advance that idea and get the community to talk about it. I know staff, you've talked about it, and police have talked, it's difficult to distinguish between a Class 1, 2, and 3, so there may be some issues there that we need to understand better before we prohibit motorized, but I think we should move in that direction. That clearly is part of the problem, certainly from a safety. This is all about safety, and that's really what our, safety is our number-one concern. Speed signs, oh, I like the idea of the electronic speed signs. I think that's a very good idea so people know, they don't know. I wouldn't know if I'm, I don't think I could get to 8 miles an hour, but I would like to know how fast I do go on a bike. And I think that is it. So in terms of my thoughts, and others may agree or disagree, but at least that's where I would like to see staff come back to counsel with staff recommendations of how to finally, at long last, after eight-plus years, address the pleas from our residents to do something to improve safety on the boardwalk. So thank you very much.
I think a couple, I think we found the ideal place for a couple roundabouts. We could have one to end. Councilman Hurdman.
Just want to reinforce, Diane, if you're looking for support, I agree with everything you said. I would like to see us moving in that direction also.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, I think both Aaron and I continue to talk about how sometimes it's challenging to get, bring an actual action back to you, and if you wouldn't mind, I was curious if you'd be interested in straw voting a couple of things.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. So why don't you tell me the couple categories, and then I will conduct the poll.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first one, maybe the easiest one, would be to update the Muni Code to adhere to the CVC guidelines, as well as Tara's concept of flipping it to state what we allow versus what we don't.
Just before I take that question, so that would cover motorized?
Basically, say that we don't allow a motorized vehicle today, although we would allow, we probably would allow an e-bike, so go ahead.
Maybe we can deal with the specific uses separately.
I was going to pull e-bikes out, another item, but.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll tell you what, if and when you propose that, we'll need to look at it line by line anyway. So a show of hands if you support looking and changing our code to reflect more of the California Vehicle Code. I see four and a couple lukewarm, so.
Just bringing it back to you and strike out and underline.
I just want me to say, clerk, because we should record.
And then no hands were.
I didn't ask for no, I just.
I'd almost abstain. I don't know. I'd have to see it. That's the, this is pretty tough, admittedly, because.
Yeah, it is.
This is the devil in the details issue, and it's really, really important to get the details right, so I don't, I'm sorry, I can't say yes or no.
I just believe we did get direction to bring something back to you.
Majority, yes.
I think it's important that the seat clerk record though who voted in favor of it, so.
Chris Hurdman, Avery, Diane, Scott.
And Councilwoman Piattar, yes.
I'm going to jump to Segways. Tara's concept was not to ban them, but to move forward with a discussion with the operators as to tour agreements. Is that something that you would like us to pursue?
Show of hands.
Yes.
I see Councilman O'Neil, Councilman Piattar, Councilwoman Diane Dixon, Mayor Pretend Duffield, Councilman Avery, and reluctantly, Councilman Hurdman.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we kind of skipped over the second.
I'm not done yet.
I was going to say, with Tara's reversing, are you going to come to that later?
Actually, I thought you were, there were at least four people saying.
No, I was in favor of the California Vehicle Code, but I'm not in favor of flipping it.
Okay.
I thought that those were one, you were going to take them separately.
Let's do that, then. Let's assume that the first one was just update the CVC. So another item to straw vote would be, would you like us to flip the code when we bring it back to say what we allow versus what we don't?
Right, show of hands. Councilman.
Two, three, four. Okay.
Yep. Did you get those four?
Yes.
I did. Four plus, three plus, I am. Surry's, I heard Mr. Piattar say, "Consider a ban." We could bring a ban back to you. We would probably do that with an abatement analysis. So would you like to see that back? The alternative is, Ms. Dixon was talking about meeting with the owners and having a more voluntary compliance plan.
And by banning them, you'd be banning them basically from the sidewalks already banned from the Oceanfront.
From sidewalks, bike lanes, and they're already banned from the boardwalk.
What, the roadway?
No, I don't think we can ban them from the roadways.
I think that, actually, I think maybe, Aaron, you could weigh in. We have a, could we have a conversation that it's a device that you cannot rent in Newport Beach?
Yeah, you could take a look at it from a land use perspective and make it a use that you don't allow the rental of the Surry cycles.
All right, is that clear?
But you would need, you know, you need some type of amortization period if you're to go that route.
Okay, so a show of hands for Councilman Piattar's idea. Councilman Piattar, Councilman Dixon, ban them. Mayor Pretend Duffield, Councilman Avery, Councilman Hurdman. That's a no vote for me.
Okay.
That was just banning them from the bike lanes and sidewalks. It didn't include a land use decision.
All right, let's be more precise on that because I think I was confused then. Banning them from, they're already banned on the boardwalk.
You banned from sidewalks.
Okay, so what about, so adding a ban on, so Surry operation on sidewalks.
And bike lanes.
And bike lanes?
Yes. They're too wide for a bike, they're too wide for a bike lane.
Already banned from the sidewalks. It would just be adding bike lanes, although I don't know how many bike lanes we have in that section of town that they'd operate on.
Or the street?
I would be curious, you don't have to straw vote this one, but again, the potential ban from the city under a land use action. I think it'd be helpful for us to know whether or not there is support for that. If there's not, we're happy to not move forward with anything like that.
Before we talk about the land use, why don't we address the first one, which is, again. again, they're already prohibited.
Sidewalks, boardwalk.
And so.
So, you can only drive it on the road, basically, and Deputy Chief Birch was kinda talking about the issues of driving it on the road. If they go, they gotta really be moving their legs in order to keep up with traffic.
Yeah, so, so let's take a straw poll first on the roadways. If you support banning Suris on the roadways, please raise your hand.
Aaron's saying we can't do that.
You can't do that?
Not for the road.
Okay, so, so there's really, except for restricting the land use, there is no more restrictions that can be placed on Suris?
No, we can restrict them from bike lanes, right? We consider them a vehicle, not a bicycle, and keep them out of bike lanes.
I think you could, but I don't think there are any bike lanes in that part of town, maybe I'm being too specific with you.
And we restrict them from the.
There's a lot of bike lanes in West Newport.
Can we designate the pen.
That's something we can look at as far as the bike lanes go, that's something I'd probably have to look at a little bit more. So, your options are, we could try to take it to the most restrictive place possible without a land use decision, maybe that should be the first question. And the second one maybe is looking at the land.
Okay, so without, okay, so without specify which ways of traveling we can, it can be banned, if you would like to explore looking to ban it on roadways, bike lanes, whatever's out there, please raise your hand. Councilman Piattar, Councilwoman Dixon, Councilman Hurtman, Councilman Avery. So, we'll have more discussions on that. Now, would any council members want to discuss restricting land use at this time? Okay, so restricting land use means essentially not allowing them to.
We would now allow them to be rented in the city, and we would. Oh, Aaron's saying just in the peninsula zone, but when, that would come back with an amortization analysis.
Okay, and so, raise your hands, please, if you support restricting the land use and having a period of amortization. So, Councilman Hurtman, Councilman Avery, Councilman Duffield, Councilwoman Dixon.
Almost done, thank you. We did not propose a change in e-bikes, and if you're comfortable with that, it'd actually be helpful to hear that you're comfortable without a change in e-bikes, or whether you don't want to see one. In other words, and the police will need to correct me, a Class 3 e-bike, which is, well, actually, Dennis, why don't you briefly summarize what can be done?
Yeah, there's three different classes of e-bike, and it's 1, 2, and 3, and basically it has to do with power and speed. And Class 3 is not allowed now, I think, and that goes to the concept of matching or marrying up our municipal code to the vehicle code, so we can get in line with all these different vehicles. Our municipal code right now is very vague on electric, motorized type vehicles, and the vehicle code very clearly defines what each of those little things are. So, and forgive me, but the, the different bikes do different speeds, and Class 1, I think, goes up to about 15 miles an hour, Class 2, I think, is 25 miles an hour, forgive me, I don't have my facts exactly right on that, I do have a sense of it, but it is part of the problem we have with enforcing those particular things, if we outlaw a particular class of bike versus the whole thing.
But the way, but the way we govern it right now, a Class 1 and 2 is allowed on the boardwalk, as long as they don't go above 8, a Class 3 is not allowed.
Correct.
So, the question would be, would you want any changes to that, or keep that as the status quo for now?
All right, so, with a show of hands on that, as Mr. Kiff said, please show your hands if you would like to explore that. Councilman Hurtman, Councilman Avery, Councilwoman Dixon.
So, you're exploring changes to that, sorry, okay. You have a four folks?
Yes.
All right. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, and I very much thank you.
Oh, is that all?
That is all.
Mr. Hurtman.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but Suris do come across on the ferry onto the island, and Suris are very problematic on our narrow streets on the island, we don't have any bike lanes for them.
Question? Councilwoman Dixon, yes.
And also, the issues related to McFadden Square, can we come back with some recommendations on how to improve that situation?
I need to talk, that is a, that is a big thing to bite off, so I would need to actually checklist that and talk to Public Works about it, we're talking about a million-dollar at least project.
Well, no, obviously I don't want to do that, but at least in the staff report, can you just talk about what we're talking about? Maybe there are a range of options, as I said, the least expensive would be just new lane markings traversing across the parking lot. But just to address something without a structural capital improvement, if that's possible.
We're heading towards Brown Act violation of territory.
Well, yeah, that's more of a separate item, separate from the boardwalk.
We're not a boardwalk, safety, the boardwalk goes right into McFadden Square.
You could have it put on a future agenda, or, I mean, you're saying that's a million-dollar project, that there's a lot of different options there? Sounds like it's a little different.
I'll work with Councilmember Dixon and just kinda flesh that out and see if it should come back as an A6 item or otherwise, appreciate that.
Mayor Lieutenant Duffield.
Dave, what about the idea of just, in key places, just adding a little width where it's, where it's just heavy-duty congested, just a small strip of width.
We'll need about five feet for the roundabout extra.
For the roundabout, no, out of Trex or something.
That's a great thing, if you wanna, if you wanna straw vote that, would you like us to come back with a proposal about?
Not the whole thing, just what we know, it's too squishy and.
And those heavy traffic areas.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if you're comfortable.
I'm sure there's unanimous support for that.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, any other statements on this item? Okay. Public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, please come forward.
Mayor Muldoon, members of the City Council, my name is Jim Moser, I think this is the opportunity to comment on the closed session agenda also, and regarding that, I wanted to observe that one of the items on it is a performance evaluation of the city manager. That's on this agenda, it was on the last agenda, the concern about that is that there were a couple of months of performance evaluations of the city manager before that, followed two meetings ago by the approval of a contract that was presumably based on those evaluations. And continual closed session meetings, talking about the performance of the city manager can morph into a discussion of city policy and goals and how they're going, which is not really a proper topic for the closed session agenda. So, there is that concern, also, to use an overused term, it has bad optics, because the public seeing this thinks maybe there is a problem with the city manager that you're having to discuss privately. I hope there is not, because actually, the safe harbor language for that would be slightly different, saying that it was a matter of discipline rather than evaluation. But if you're setting goals, I hope you can complete that. What I really want to talk to you about is the letter that I sent to you about your meeting on April 11th, and what was not on the agenda at that time, namely, a vote to relocate the Ronald Reagan Memorial Statute. Those of you who lived here in 2011 will know that that was a highly contentious issue, and all of you should know that the agenda is supposed to allow the people who are interested in a city issue to look at the agenda and know whether there's going to be a vote on it or not. That agenda from April 11th had on it what looked like a housekeeping matter for a contract for management of a sculpture exhibit. There was no way in the world anyone interested in the Ronald Reagan statue or its fate would have known that there was gonna be a discussion or a vote about it, it was as unexpected as if in this housekeeping thing, you had taken a vote to sell the Ben Carlson statue for scrap to help pay for this management contract. There's really an extremely simple solution to this, which is just to schedule a meeting that is properly noticed, so that the people who are interested in the topic have a chance to comment on it before your decision, not after it. I hope you will meet at some point to consider the letter and a response to that, because in the absence of response, you force me in the very awkward position of having to sue my own city to force what should be simple and the proper solution, and that's the last thing in the world I would want to do, is to sue my own city. Thank you.
Thank you, any other comments? All right, just for those who are watching, we have not had the chance to enter discussions with Mr. Kiff about his performance or evaluation, so it has not been trailed or discussed numerous times for the sake of having policy discussions or discussing his performance, but merely because we've been crunched for time. On that note, Mr. Harp?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. The City Council will adjourn to closed session to discuss items 4A and C, including, A through C, including meeting with legal counsel, discuss two matters of existing litigation, both titled Paul Mathias versus City of Newport Beach, meeting with the city's labor negotiators to discuss negotiations with the Newport Beach Police Association and the Association of Newport Beach Ocean Lifeguards, and to discuss the performance of city manager Dave Kiff. Thank you.
Calling the meeting to order for the May 23rd, 2017, regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Harp, do you have a closed session report?
There's no closed session report this evening, Mayor Muldoon.
Thank you, please join me in our pledge. Yes, we do, and we're welcome tonight with Ms. Meladon Mapoun.
Madeline.
Okay, Madeline Mapoun, sorry, different spelling.
That's okay.
First church of Christ.
Scientist, Christian Science Church. Thank you for the opportunity. Let us pray. To our great Creator, the Almighty and loving Presence who is God, thank you for this opportunity to come together under your law and guidance, with a heart full of gratitude for the right to worship you as each one here is led to do. Bless our elected officials and citizens of this beautiful community, guide them tonight in their decisions, so they will reflect both your justice and mercy. Your law has always provided instruction and blessings for leading fulfilled, successful lives in families and in this community. Our responsibility is to seek and follow your wisdom. May our community, its leaders and citizens, be like those trees described in the opening of Psalm 1, planted by streams of water which yield their fruit in its season, and their leaves do not wither, in all that they do, they prosper. Amen.
Amen, thank you. Madam Clerk?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Thank you. City council announcements and new items council members would like to be introduced for future agendas. Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you. Well, we got to see a lot of each other over the last couple weeks, because there were a lot of events going on inside the city, I had to write them down and remember them all. Two weeks ago, we had the Bunnies and Book Festival over at the library, which was very well-attended by a number of young families, which was fantastic. We had the Field of Honor put on by the Newport Harbor Exchange Club, the mayor did a great job speaking, we had a lieutenant colonel from the Marines who got up and spoke about his service and what it's meant to have those serve before him. We had a public safety day, police, fire, and lifeguards, just a fantastic job, again, a number of young families, a lot of volunteers in the community came out, and it was, it was very well-attended. The Art Walk, Balboa Island, I never come away from that empty-handed. Newport Coast Elementary School had their PTA volunteer awards, I was able to represent the city at those and hand out awards. In particular, I'd like to. In particular, I'd like to highlight the woman who does the crossing guards program there, just necessary and phenomenal. And then Citizens Police Academy graduation, again, a great speech by Mayor Muldoon. And then the Oasis Volunteer Fair, I want to highlight that one very briefly simply because the number of people who came out to that and the number of booths connecting seniors to volunteer activities inside the city warms my heart. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Piattar? Mrs. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments to support Councilmember O'Neil. The Field of Honor event was fantastic, and he said everything that needed to be said, as well as the Fire, Police, and Lifeguard Safety Day. The Citizens Police Academy graduation, I, as a former graduate, take great pride in attending the graduations and appreciate the good comments from the mayor. This is the 41st class, which means it's been going on for about 20 years, and it's just a magnificent opportunity for our residents, citizen residents, to engage more with our community and our wonderful police department. So, congratulations to that. I also want to show, it should be on the screen behind me, our city was recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association, and our financial director, Dan M., as we affectionately call him, is not here. He's at some financial conference with this probably the same group. But in any event, we've just, the city's been recognized for our fiscal year 2016 CAFR, otherwise known as the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFR. And kudos to staff and our financial team for the recognition for excellence in financial reporting. It represents the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I'm greatly honored and pleased to be able to recognize our finance team. So, Dave, if you would please convey to the finance group that we are honored to be well-served by them. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herdman?
I also attended many of the events that Councilman O'Neil and Councilwoman Dixon mentioned. It was the first time I had attended the flag ceremony to recognize those who are currently serving in our armed forces, and it was a most impressive event that the Exchange Club here in Newport Beach puts on. Really proud to be a part of that. I failed to mention at the last council meeting that I held my first town hall meeting right across the way over there in the community room. And I want to thank the staff who did an excellent job in preparing for that, helping out with it, and also thank the 60-plus people from District 5 who attended. Also, this, not last week, but the week before that, the Director of the Balboa Island Museum and Historical Society, Shirley Peppes, and myself had the pleasure of hosting our city manager, Dave Kiff, and our Assistant City Manager, Carol Jacobs, at the museum and took them on a tour. And then we also did that the day before with Gary Sherwin from Visit Newport Beach. The museum is in the process of doing a feasibility study in order to find a permanent home and on Balboa Island, and changing the name from the museum to "The Museum" on Balboa Island, and they're very hopeful of expanding the museum to incorporate all of the history of all of Newport Beach. So, I wanted Dave and Carol and Gary to become familiar with the museum and their efforts. And I think that's it. Everything else has already been mentioned.
Thank you. Mr. Avery?
Yeah, my attendance at the Field of Honor was the first time I'd been there, and I was really struck by it, and it hit home with me emotionally, just the sacrifice, the valor, the whole scene, all the flags. It was absolutely fantastic. If you haven't been there before, next year, it's still going on, right? We've got to...
Till next Tuesday.
Till next Tuesday. It's something, but it was a wonderful ceremony. And somewhat related, my niece is in town with her husband and her four kids, aged one to eight. And I loaded them up in a Harbor 20 and took them out sailing on Sunday, and we went out into the Turning Basin. There was a pirate party going on with a full raft up and everybody in costume, and the kids just couldn't believe that, and we sailed by. And then we went down to Balboa Island, and here's the Art Walk with the bands playing, and we went all the way sailed down the north bayfront, and people and the artwork, and they said, "This is some kind of town you got here." And the kids had a great time, and the harbor was just doing its thing. There were charter boats, everybody was having a great time, and it was just a reminder of, you know, what a great place we live, and it's always fun when guests come to show it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So, is this behind me? No. It is now. Okay. You would think of a trash or pickup cleanup of the harbor to be on top of the earth, but this is the first annual underwater trash cleanup. So, there is a ton of junk that gets thrown into the harbor, and it disappears, and obviously none of us can see it, and it builds and builds and builds, and it contaminates the water, and on and on and on. So, we can't, I didn't, I can't get credit for this. Billy Dutton is the driving force. He's the little Energizer bunny. He does it all, volunteer, and he pulled this thing together Saturday, June 3, 7:00 a.m. It's, you don't have to be a diver. You can come and enjoy it. You get some food, and there's other booths that'll be set up for about, learning about water quality and the things we do to keep the harbor clean and the things we're going to do. It's at the Balboa Bay Club, and there will be a barge, a small barge there where all this stuff, or I would call it more like junk, is going to be piled up, and we're going to measure it and weigh it and take pictures of it, and hopefully, we will get a lot of good stuff that shouldn't be in the harbor, batteries, old bikes, and you name it. It's down there, on and on and on. So, that will be the first annual, and hoping for many more afterwards. Thanks.
Thank you. So, I also had the pleasure of attending the Field of Honor event with many notable veterans and a lot of people who you would never suspect were veterans, and many people can honor their family members with purchasing a flag or donating money to a flag that would have their family or ancestor's picture and a story attached to it. It's a moving sight if you can make your way over to castaways. And then we also, my wife and I, attended the public safety event, and that was a great opportunity for people to bring children and friends to see our public safety and our K-9 and SWAT team and firefighters respond to emergency situations. And then lastly, I did get a chance to attend the Balboa Art Walk and award a young Colonel del Mar student the Mayor's Award, which pretty much just means I think he has good stuff. I'm not, as people in art commissions can tell you, I'm not really much of an art guy, but he had some great pictures, and it was a beautiful, hot day, and it's a perfect day, Brad, to show off the city that you know govern. So, I'm glad he got to show people how great Newport is. One exciting event we're coming up, and it should be on the overhead, if we can get it up, is we'll be dedicating a park off of Cliff, which it's unmarked right now. We're going to be dedicating it as the John Wayne Park, and there's going to be a public ceremony and reception to follow. It's Friday, May 26, so it's this Friday at 3:00 p.m., and Councilman Duffield will be addressing, or Mayor Potem Duffield will be addressing the crowd, as will Ethan Wayne, John Wayne's son, and I'll have the pleasure of saying a couple of words as well. And it should be a really enjoyable time with the presence of civic leaders, military veterans in honor of Memorial Day, and many law enforcement and first responders there, so hope you're able to join us for that event.
Mayor Muldoon?
Yes.
Just one other thing. I believe all of us were invited to opening day at the various yacht clubs throughout our harbor, and several of us participated in those activities, and I would just want to thank the Commodores and the clubs for the invitation and the opportunity to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 14 and supplemental item 16. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Counsel, any items to pull from the consent calendar? Mr. O'Neil?
I need to recuse myself on item number six due to proximity to real property that I own, and then I'm going to register a no vote on item number seven because I love the fact that we're doing the FEMA work, but I just can't justify the cost benefit of the additional $75,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Piattar?
I'd like to pull items number three and six.
Thank you. Mrs. Dixon?
I have one question on item number five. I probably don't, do not need to pull it, but Mr. Kiff, on the renewal of the restaurant bid, have we been successful in collecting the unpaid assessments?
Actually, Councilmember Dixon, I don't know the answer to that. I know Tara does.
Is Tara or Mary here?
Hey, we have the right people here.
Thank you. Yes, the Newport Beaching Company is doing the bookkeeping for the Restaurant Association, and they have made some progress in those past due payments. So, they're slowly chipping away at it.
Well, very good. Thank you, and I do not need to pull that item. That was my only question. I do request to pull item number, did you pull item number six?
I did.
Okay, and item number eight. No, I've decided to pull it. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herdman?
I don't have anything to pull.
Thank you. Mr. Avery?
None.
Mr. Duffield?
I have none.
And I'll be pulling item number nine. Mayor Potem Duffield, do you have a motion?
I do. Mayor, I move the balance of the consent calendar, items 1 through 16, with recusal on item number six from Councilmember O'Neil, with item number eight pulled by Councilwoman Dixon, and Councilman Piattar on item number three and six, and Mayor Muldoon pulling number nine, lastly, with a no vote on item seven from Councilmember O'Neil.
I'll second that.
All right. Any comments in the dais where we go to public? All right, public comments on these items we're addressing in the consent calendar?
I'm sorry, did I hear item 10 and 1/2? That is S16 being called?
So, S16 is part of the, is part of the motion, correct? So, now would be the time for you to comment on that item.
Thank you. My name is Alan Beek. I'm the Secretary of SPAH, and I wish to address item S16, the staff report, in particular, on page four. Well down the page, just above environmental review, the staff report says, and I quote, "As of the date of this report, AWG has signed off on the amendment to the agreement. They did so in early May 2017. SPAH has not yet done so. However, SPAH is expected to approve the amendment. The council expects to approve the amendment on June 6, meeting of the board, at the meeting of the Board of Supervisors." SPAH is expected to approve. Whoever expects SPAH to approve may be disappointed. At the SPAH board meeting last Friday, about an hour and a half, we went into discussion of SPAH's appropriate position and of an accurate way of expressing that position. The result was to keep the same wording that was adopted a month earlier. Quote, "SPAH is not prepared to sign the proposed amendment to the settlement agreement due to concerns that the change could potentially result in an increase in the number of flights." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beek. Would either Mr. Harp or Mr. Kiff like to address this issue?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the SPAH meeting to listen to the discussion and to make some comments myself. I certainly respect SPAH's perspective on this. It's not my conclusion this would increase the number of flights, and I provided information that they asked for. I just provided it back to them today involving how commuter air carriers at John Wayne have really significantly decreased over time, and that the county does have an obligation, I'm saying the County of Orange is the airport operator, to adhere with, to grant agreements and to not discriminate against classes of carriers, including commuter air carriers. So, it's our belief, it's our council's belief, the county's belief, and I believe even SPAH's council's belief respectfully, that this agreement should be signed. So, I certainly, again, respect what Mr. Beek said. It doesn't change our recommendation to you. I would certainly change the recommend, sorry, the comments in my staff report. I don't know that SPAH will approve it in the next few days, but I'm still hopeful they will approve it.
Just to be clear, you included in the staff report, but they're not required to consent. They're not a party to the action.
Sounds a better question for Aaron as to how that works.
No, SPAH is a party to the settlement agreement, so their approval will be, would be necessary. My understanding is that they were looking for some additional information that they didn't have at the last board meeting. Not all the board members were present, so I think we are hopeful that they will go ahead and move forward with it. There's some other additional issues that I can't discuss in open session, but I think that eventually they will agree that this is an appropriate change to the agreement.
So, the thought is we will, in this motion, confirm our support of the agreement and hope at a later date they will as well because it will require their support of it.
That's right, and it is going to be considered by the county on June 6, and their staff is hopeful that the council would move forward with approving it this evening so they can make that representation to the county when they go there.
So, Mr. Beek, if I understand correctly, we can approve it, but you could still determine to not approve it, and we would have to go back. Is that correct?
That's right. They are required signatory to the agreement, and so, you know, there's four, there's four parties to the settlement agreement. All the parties would have to agree to amend it. So, this is an issue that SPAH will have to consider, but if they need additional information or input, I think we can provide that to them.
Mr. Beek, would you mind going to the podium?
I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing. If I'm being asked a question, could you please repeat it?
Yes, I will. So, it seems that we could vote to confirm this agreement, and SPAH would still be required for the agreement to be supported by all parties at a later date, should you decide to support it. So, what I'm asking you is, are you going to continue deliberate on this issue, or have you made up your mind and we can vote on it and it's not going to change your position?
We have not made a definite decision either to say yes or to say no. If I speak any further, I'm just speaking my own ideas, or if you want, we'll take an hour and a half and work out an official SPAH position, but we know that, or we have found out recently through the researches of Jim Mosher, that there are over 100 pages of argument on this question being presented by the airlines. Those probably have something pretty substantive in them. We didn't even know they existed until Mr. Mosher discovered them. We want the time to study them and make a decision based on a lot of information that we did not know about before.
Understandable. Okay. Thank you. And the public comments?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon and members of the council. I am the aforementioned Mr. Mosher, and what Mr. Beek is referring to is that the item has been heard by the airport commission, the county's airport commission, and at that meeting, a great volume of back-and-forth of the airlines with their comments on why they wanted this magic number 76, whether they're soon going to want a different number, various other issues about that was presented. That was just last week, and SPAH met a couple of days later, hadn't had a chance to look at any of that, so their position, I think, is accurate to say that they're... at any of that, so their position, I think, is accurate to say that they're, they don't feel they can make an informed decision yet, and they're waiting until they are well informed. And as to being well informed, I wanted to point out to the council that you do have a policy about the settlement agreement and the airport. It's called Council Policy A17, and although it might not be totally clear in black and white, the public certainly, in reading that policy, would think that any decision about the settlement agreement would be heard before our aviation committee, and so it bothers me a little bit that this is being directed to you without having been reviewed publicly with those issues that took SPAH an hour and a half, and whether it would increase flights or not, has not been discussed by your aviation committee. And I guess I can leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. And the comments on the consent calendar, please come forward.
My name is Sue DeVorek, and I live in the Bluffs neighborhood on Avonita Cumbre, and I'm being directly affected by the planes flying overhead incessantly. I lived in the Plaza community, which is located by Corona Del Mar High School in 2010, and prior to that, I lived at Promontory Point for two years. So I had experienced the airplanes flying above my home. I moved back east for five years and returned to Newport Beach last year and purchased a new home in the Bluffs. I would love to be able to sit on my back porch in the evening, enjoy the beautiful view and of the back bay and the spectacular sunsets, but I can't because of the low-flying planes that pass directly above my head relentlessly. I can't carry on a conversation with others on my back porch. I really can't because of the planes are so loud and low-flying. We can't hear each other talk. I have double-pane windows, but I have to turn my TV up to hear it each time a plane passes overhead. It has become absolutely unbearable to deal with the noise these planes are now producing. It was not like this when I lived here from 2007 to 2010. It is much, much worse. The planes are almost constant all day long, and while other airports do all they can to mitigate the sound impacts on surrounding homes, the airplanes flying out of John Wayne now are at lower altitude so that the sound impact is dramatically worse. I can't understand why we're basing our sound standards on sound technology that's 30 years old. And since the FAA has streamlined the flight, streamlined the flight path, all of the planes are flying over the Bluffs neighborhood. It's too much. The planes also pose health issues for our neighborhood due to the constant exposure to jet fuel. In short, the planes are driving us all crazy. Our quality of life has been destroyed. Please, please fix this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, there's two sort of related airport issues. I'm a neighbor of yours, and we're currently in litigation with FAA, and we're making good progress, but it's a very important issue, I agree. And regarding the settlement, well, let me bring you back to the, any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the dais. Regarding S16, I'm inclined to support it, and we'll see how SPAH feels about it when they have time to review it and discuss it amongst themselves. Any comments or discussions about the motion as, as made prior? Okay, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
With items removed from the consent calendar, include items three, six, eight, and nine. Staff on item three.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Chip Duncan, Fire Chief. My administrative manager, Angel Laskas, and myself represent any questions you may have about the IGT request.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Piattar.
I pull this. This is something that we approved last year, too, and this is one of those weird things where in order to qualify, we, to get this money back, we have to pony up and pay first with no guarantee that we'll get the money back. Now, this year, and we approved last year, we got the money back, but this is something that, man, maybe staff can give the report. We're paying somewhere in the neighborhood of $450,000, but then we should get back nearly $600,000 in payments, so we're risking 450 to receive 150 because of the whole way that CalOptima and CalMedicare and Medi-Cal work together, but maybe staff can make a presentation.
Okay, that's correct. Just like last year, we do have to, we have to give funds, basically as matching funds to draw down additional federal dollars. Those, the matching funds that come back help us recoup the previously unreimbursed costs for providing Medi-Cal services to patients in Newport Beach. The reason why we have to actually send the funds up is because the state has a finite amount of money that they will budget each year for Medi-Cal services. So once they reach that cap, they're not going to put any additional funds in. They do allow local governments to, to bring this money forward. They use that to draw down additional federal money that's over and beyond what they've recouped that year, and they call that headroom. So it does allow the state to use the local funds to draw down additional federal money.
What are the dollar amounts? How much are we having to pay to CalOptima, and what is the anticipated receipt?
This year, the total transfer would be $459,621. We would get that original amount back plus $153,208 in new funds.
So our matching funds are almost $3 for every $1.
You get back 33 cents on the dollar typically.
And, and what is the risk as far as whether or not we would perhaps not even get our capital back, much less the additional 150?
Well, there's no contractually written guarantee that you do get your original investment back. We've asked for that in the past, and that's not something that they put in the contracts. We did successfully participate last year. Also, UC Irvine Medical Center has been participating since 2010. They're participating this year at a significantly higher rate than we are. They're putting up 47 million. So we don't have any evidence that anyone hasn't gotten the original investment back plus draw down additional funds. Addition to that, the funds that we send up will be put into a fiduciary trust fund that's set aside specifically for this program, and so it can't be reallocated for other uses.
But they are not guaranteeing it'll come back to us. It could go to another applicant or requester for it. I take it that the matching funds are some sort of a justification to the feds to, to grant us money above their normal budget, that they see that there's contributions and they're just matching three to one, not evidently understanding that all $4 come back to us?
Correct. They, they do want to see the matching funds because the original investment, in addition to the money that's drawn down, does have to be used for providing services, medical services. It doesn't have to be specifically for Medi-Cal patients, but we do use the original investment that we send, plus the money that comes back for providing medical services. So it does become allocated for that purpose, once it's used for the program.
Oh, so even the $450,000 that we put in now comes back earmarked, and we're restricted as far as what we can use it for?
It's all in general fund, but it is, it is, in a way, we guarantee that we're using that towards medical services.
And do we have that kind of a budget that we would use that money anyway? That would, that would be yes, right?
Yes.
It's hard to hear back home when they're shaking their head.
Remember, all of our paramedic services, and that's a large dollar amount in the 20 million range, so this is...
Oh, this would go towards that.
Exactly.
So it's not restricted.
Any kind of medical service, that's, that's medical service that's being provided.
So we have more than enough capacity to spend the earmarked money on. What's the danger, or what's the risk of not getting paid back? I mean, it sounds like UCI is gambling millions, and they've been successful for eight years or whatever so far.
Correct. Yeah, we don't anticipate. Like I said, there's no contractually written guarantee, but we have no indication.
There's no, I mean, do we know what funds they're coming out of from the medical, from the federal side as to whether or not Congress is talking about, you know, discontinuing or continuing? Is it tied to Obamacare, which they're dismantling? I mean, what are our risks here?
It is tied to Medicare, or, yeah, it's tied to Medicare at the federal level. The, this round is likely going to be the last round because they're making changes at the federal level, so the way that they calculate it right now is they have actuarially sound rates that they figure out how they're going to reimburse for Medicare. They're not going to do that anymore, so we do know that there's a change coming, that this program isn't going to be available in the future.
Does that change affect the potential of not getting money back?
No, the changes are effective FY '18.
Right, so we can take it out of your salary if it does affect it, right?
So I think the point is, though, we probably would take a much harder look at this next year and possibly decide not to recommend to you that we proceed forward with that.
And the fact that the state may become a sanctuary state won't affect it either. You'll guarantee that one, too. Thank you very much.
Councilman O'Neil.
Real briefly, the, the purpose of doing this is to recoup some of the money that it costs the city when we send out an ambulance and receive Medicare reimbursement. It's substantially lower than the cost to us, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so for folks in the audience, it's worth knowing, it costs us a little over $1,500 to send an ambulance, and we get back about $120 from Medicare on that, and the difference between that is eaten by the city to the tune, last year, of service provision was about $796,000, and we received back $62,000 from Medicare reimbursements. So what we're talking about tonight is trying to offset that difference and, and bringing revenue back into the city. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Well, yes, and just to piggyback on Mr. O'Neil's question, so if we do not approve this, we do not get that reimbursement that we've already expended those funds, correct?
Yeah, the unreimbursed costs would stand as they are right now.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is a method where we would recover a portion of those costs that we've expended.
That's correct. Right now, we're at about 8% recovery. It would take us up to about 17 and 1/2%.
Yes, but the record is last year we did get reimbursed, and UCI has a history of being reimbursed. All right, thank you.
Other comments? Seeing none, the motion?
I move staff approval.
I second.
Let's vote.
With Councilmember Piattar voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Item six, staff.
And just a note for the record, Councilmember Will O'Neill is recusing himself.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I asked for this to be pulled. I've got, when we had Irvine Boulevard last year, we talked about maybe doing a lesser expense, and the council decided that that was an important entry, and they wanted to make sure that they improved the median. But at the time, we talked about turf replacement, that we would try to be economical, and the way I understand, I haven't seen the working drawings, but this is similar to the Irvine Boulevard median, and the Irvine Boulevard median replaced irrigation. It had several different kinds of turf and, not turf, but shrubs and ground covers and, you know, I'm sorry, but when you're driving by it at 50 miles an hour, if it's green, I think it's okay. And so my proposal would be to continue this item and give direction to staff to basically pick a nice drought-tolerant ground cover and replace the turf with a ground cover without changing the irrigation other than whatever repair might be needed. In fact, one of the items I recall, we talked about on this issue before, was that the ongoing landscape maintenance that we're doing out there on the islands anyway, that they would take, you know, a section at a time and just under the maintenance contract, go ahead and change that to a ground cover rather than the turf. I just don't see the need to have all the different, you know, levels of, of shrubs and ground covers that a landscape architect likes to put into a design when we're talking about a median where there's not people walking through, and the people going by are going by at high speed. So rather than just say, hey, I want to kill it, I would rather say, I would like to continue this and allow staff to come back with a proposal that would be a much more modest cost.
All right. Any councilmembers want to discuss it or have a report from staff?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
In the staff report, it says approve project drawings and specifications. I did not see that in the staff report. Is that something that you could show us just to amplify what Mr. Piattar is saying? What is it going to look like?
Yes, we do have the plans and specs on the back we can show you, but the best example of what it's supposed to look like is what the Irvine Company just recently did on San Joaquin Hills right at Jamboree. This plant palette mimics that. Most of it's natal plum. It's a ground cover, which has some other alloy and other to accent it, but majority is natal plum ground cover. We're using one gallon plant, doing a little sprinkler repair, but it's, it's pretty minimal, but there are other things if you want to do, like a hydro seed we had talked in the past or something. I don't know where the costs are, but we could surely explore that if you want.
Okay, thank you. Let me just quickly go out. Any public comments on this item? Thank you, George. I appreciate that. All right, back to the dais. I'm inclined to support you, Mr. Piattar. Any discussion or debate on this item? Okay, so do you want to make a motion?
I move that we can, that we table this item and allow, and give direction to staff to come back with a reasonable cost proposal alternative.
Yeah, a lower cost proposal.
Yes.
I'll second. Discussion? Councilman Hurdman.
I'd just like to, what do I want to say? I know that eventually the, the medians on Jamboree are going to have to be replaced also because that's all currently turf, and that's basically against the law now. So I'd like staff to, in, in coming up with an alternative for what Scott has suggested, that they keep that in mind also for Jamboree, replacing the medians on Jamboree, just with a nice green ground cover, ground cover, as opposed to highly expensive plants and rocks and that type of thing. I think this is one, one area where we can, we can make an attempt to keep costs down.
Great. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
Do you want to get Will, Aaron? Okay, item eight, before we have staff speak, I'm going to invite Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, staff. The reason I pulled it, it has come to my attention that a certain provision of this proposal would permit food carts to be, a food cart vending concession to be permitted in the Marina Park, which I think is a good idea, except I've now heard from some local store owners in the immediate vicinity that there may be some issues related to competitive disadvantage, and because this is on city property, I want to be sure that we give full vetting. So overall, I'm supportive of what you're going to be presenting and the overall concept to help ensure the success and the visitor friendliness of the Lighthouse Cafe. I think it's excellent in all areas. I just want to, so I'll ask Mr. Kiff if others agree, of course. Can we pull that, the food, sundry food cart item out of this proposal? Is there logic in doing that? Just so we could vet it a little bit more in terms of its competitive impact on some of the smaller retailers in the immediate vicinity.
Councilmember Dixon, Aaron's recommending to me quietly that, well, that, that was a plan I suggested. I think he thinks because larger negotiation that he would probably send that back, continue it for two meetings, and we do the negotiation to potentially take out the mobile cart.
Okay, so essentially just pull the item?
Actually, make a...
I postpone the item?
No, your, your recommendation respectfully, yeah, would be to continue the item for two meetings with the recommendation that the negotiation involve deletion of the food cart provision.
Councilman Piattar.
Can you explain what the food cart is?
Councilmember Piattar, Mayor Muldoon, the, it's a mobile car just with the intent of being available during the day hours in proximity to the playground area, which would sell coffee, other types of bottled drinks, and miscellaneous sundry items just for the convenience of the visitors to the park.
Okay, maybe you can help me out, Councilwoman Dixon. Okay, maybe you can help me out, Councilwoman Dixon. I'm just looking for what the big competitive disadvantage is, since there really aren't those kinds of sellers anywhere nearby.
Well, there, I guess there are, and it has come to my attention. I've heard from one today, as a matter of fact, so hence the reason. I just want to give consideration to a local retailer who's in, within 500 feet, probably, of Marina Park, just to see if this is something, and maybe fully understand and explain what the concession cart is, just to maybe remove any uncertainty about it.
So, your goal isn't to eliminate it, but just to reevaluate it?
Reevaluate it, and just make sure that the other vendors in the area have been listened to. It hasn't been vetted in a public setting, they just heard about it, I guess. It's just giving it two more weeks of vetting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman O'Neil?
Yeah, that actually helps clarify my thoughts a little bit, because I wasn't going to support the recommendation to remove it straight out. Perhaps it's worth looking at again, but this is the problem with having government be the landlord in a private sector tenant, is we have issues like this arise, so if this is the arms-length negotiations, this is what I would support, but if we need to continue it two meetings, I suppose I'd support that, but I would not recommend deleting it if that's where our negotiations had already been.
I would have gone carte blanche. Okay, any more discussion on this item?
Can I make a motion against puns? So, if I understand the direction, is the, are you proposing continuing it two meetings, then?
Just to continue, just so I find out a little bit more. I would be elected to vote this evening until I really understood the impact on the neighboring businesses, that's all.
Let me make a suggestion, Mr. O'Neil and Ms. Dixon. If it's not to actually remove something, it's just to allow more transparency to it and more feedback, we could certainly deal with that at the, your next meeting is three weeks away, so rather than moving it five weeks away, three weeks will be fine, so one meeting.
That's what I was going to say. Thank you.
No, this is a single reading, so, I would encourage you, again, respectfully, the motion would be to continue this item for, until the next meeting.
All right, I'll probably, I'll make that motion after we hear public comment.
Yeah, we can't put the cart for the horse. Public comments.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am sorry, I do have to come up and speak on this issue. My name is George Schroeder, and, you know, I do thank Councilperson Dixon for at least, you know, asking us to think about this, because what we have here is, we have a park and a restaurant, and on 15th Street, we have a little grocery store that sells soft drinks, sandwiches, and everything else, and then on the oceanfront in 15th Street, I don't know if it's the stuffed burger or something, but there's a little burger shop there. So, if you're at the park and you're playing, and you want to get a quick bite, if you don't want to go in and sit in at the Lighthouse Restaurant and eat, or if you were at that park playing tennis four or five years ago, you would go to the little businesses on 15th Street. Okay, that's where you would go. Okay, you know, I lived down there, or you might go into the little grocery store and buy some potato chips, a soft drink, okay? So now, to give this operator a vending cart where he can go over and stop people from leaving the park, going over to 15th Street, okay, it is something to think about. And then in Los Angeles, they had so many street carts that were unlicensed and everything. This is kind of like, you know, the camel's nose under the tent, okay? We don't really have street cart vendors here. I think that's a good thing, because all of our restaurants are kind of struggling to stay open. We have bids for, to give them business and all that, so, and then, and then lastly, I like the Lighthouse Restaurant, I go there, it's a fabulous view. I have friends who, we go out to eat a lot, sometimes we go to the cannery, because you can get a cocktail there and get a fabulous bay of the view. Guess what? We're not going to the cannery anymore, because we can go to the Lighthouse now, because you're just gave them a hard liquor license, and they're up until 11:00 PM. Okay, so now, what we've done is cannibalized good businesses by giving this guy more opportunity at a restaurant we built for him, where the other businesses like, and I could name names, they'll buy an old establishment, invest 200, 300, 400, 500, 600,000 in proving it, okay, and then this happens. So, I think, you know, there's no strong argument for a food cart. If you'd want to give one, give it to the people on 15th Street. Well, perhaps not, because again, there is no good argument for a food cart, because that's a camel's nose under the tent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon, and members of the council. My name is Jim Moser. I have no objection at all to the request to continue the item. I would point out, I don't think it's been very clearly mentioned what it is that you are debating and what the public has been commenting on. Item 8, it is an amendment to the lease agreement, according to the agenda, with the Lighthouse Cafe, which the city licenses and leases at the Marina Park, a family park that the city is quite proud of. And you would not know from the agenda that it had anything to do with the food cart, although it is mentioned in the staff report. The main thing you see on the agenda, which I slightly up there on the notice, is the city council is being asked to waive its policy regarding alcohol sales at public facilities, so that this cafe, as Mr. Schroeder just said, can sell hard liquor in addition to the beer and wine that it already sells there. The fact that they, first of all, the policy that you're waiving, I would point out, Mr. O'Neil is studying the policies, they are, as they're amended, they are adopted by resolution, and some of those policies within them say that the city council can just vote to waive them whenever it wishes to. As near as I can tell, this is not one of those policies that says, "Oh, we have to do is, oh, we'll vote, we're going to not pay attention to our own policy." So, it's a little surprising, perhaps, that you don't need a resolution to override the resolution that adopted the policy. That's one point. And then the second point is, I think the policy is a pretty sound one, particularly on the peninsula. I thought the public was concerned about an overconcentration of these Type 47 licenses, and having the city lead the charge at a family-friendly public facility to be adding to the problem by having more Type 47 licenses seems kind of counter to the narrative that we've been hearing about an overconcentration and the problem that these licenses create. If they create a problem, why is the city wanting to be encouraging them, particularly at a park that is supposed to be for families? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, seeing none. Thank you for the background. Yes, this is in relation to a restaurant at Marina Park and expanding its use and its liquor licensing ability. Do we have any more discussion on the request to continue this? Do we have a motion?
I move to continue to the next meeting.
I second.
Okay, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Okay, item 9 is to extend an airport consulting agreement with Tom Edwards, who is sort of a consultant slash watchdog, I would argue, over the John Wayne Airport and the settlement agreement. I pulled this item simply to see if my colleagues would agree, and I've talked about it, Mr. Kiff, just separating this into a single-year contract, all other terms the same, and the rate the same per year, but to take it on a yearly basis. Mr. Kiff, could you please just give me your thoughts on that and the term, and how you feel about going to one-year term?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor Muldoon. Yes, his contract has been a one-year, and I apologize, I was probably asking for a couple more years, because it always pops up on the agenda, and I forget about it, so it's perfectly appropriate to keep him up for one year. I think Tom's doing a good job for us, and he certainly has plenty of work involving all the things with the airport.
As do I. Thank you. Any comments?
I'll support that.
Okay, so, I move staff report, but on a yearly basis. Councilman O'Neil, second. Any public comments on this item? All right, seeing none, any discussion request? Okay, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Adam Clark.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Thank you. So now is the time when you would make public comments on anything involving a four-legged creature in the sand? If you have a hat, I'm assuming you're here for that especially. So please, if you wouldn't mind forming two lines on, at opposing podiums, if you're here to discuss any item that is a non-agenda item this evening.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Lear. I've lived in Cronedomar my whole life, preschool, grade school, high school, still. I'm still growing up, and I'm living here, and I love it. This is the third visit that I've come to city council. This is a very important issue. I was here first, then went to Santa Ana, and then now I'm back again. In Santa Ana, the Parks and Beach Commission voted on this issue 7 to 0. It was so exciting. It was so exciting to see people listen to us and realize these are important issues. But all of a sudden, there's been some signs that are confusing people on the beach, misleading dog owners, that dogs are no longer allowed at this beach. I know that they've been digging out, but they, someone's been posting signs. This is incorrect. Not only did they vote 0 to 7, but they were going to, what I got the idea is, that they were going to expand the Dog Beach to Olive Street. Dog Beach is very important to the canines and the owners. Taking this away from the community of Orange County is not right. This is an area on the beach that is loved by many, especially the four-legged. Do the right thing. Do not be persuaded by just a few people trying to ban this issue, trying to keep their area. This is public. This is a public beach. Please, think of the four-legged. Think of the community of Newport Beach, Cronedomar, Huntington Beach. We all live here, we all want to play. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment.
Hi, my name is Tim Hamilton. I live at 212 Sapphire Avenue, Balboa Island, Newport Beach. I've lived in Orange County for the last 32 years. I'd like to bring to everyone's attention the fact that we've got 6,000 people who are pro-Dog Beach, and they've been fighting for this, including myself and my colleagues here, for the last two years. We've had two very, very productive meetings with the Parks Department, who recommended Dog Beach and expanding it. We met with the supervisors, and we had three counselors there speaking in favor of Dog Beach. Everything was looking good, and we felt confident that the details would be worked out. So, imagine my shock and horror when I found out that Councilmember Diane Dixon, in February, decided to ignore the 6,000 and write a letter to the Board of Supervisors requesting that they ignore our requests, reject our plea, and deny Dog Beach being both official and permanent. As if that's not sad enough, it was sent in secret, and it's filled with inaccurate statements. It starts with, "I write this letter today on my own accord, and I'm not speaking for Newport Beach City Council." It is, of course, on Newport Beach letterhead paper. It is, of course, signed, "Diane Dixon, Councilmember, City of Newport Beach." She also claims that up to 100 people don't want Dog Beach. I've been to two critical meetings and maybe met seven. If there was 100, surely they would turn up. Again, we have 6,000 supporters. What happened to a statement in the City Hall website where it says, "The power of the people to make their local government work for them, by them, and with them"? Doesn't seem to be very accurate. I find this letter appalling, and I think it should be withdrawn, if not by Mrs. Dixon, by the city attorney. I think it leaves the city open to some exposure, because the inaccuracies are terrible in this letter. I'd like the no-dog signs removed, and I'd like to ask the council members politely to agenditize this issue and bring it back to the council, so we can talk about it as a matter of transparency. I think it's critical that when you have that many people who've signed a petition to support an emotional issue in the city, that we don't go and chase 100 people and ignore 6,000. Thank you very much indeed for listening.
My name is Hamilton. Mr. Glenn?
Hi, Mike Glenn, resident of Balboa Peninsula. In April 2016, the prior council unanimously wrote letters to the county supporting Dog Beach. We've, of course, had three of those council members replaced. In September of last year, all of those three new people unanimously agreed to also support Dog Beach. As you all know, Parks Beach and Recreation Committee set a 7 to 0 vote to expand Dog Beach to Olive Street, as hundreds of people in the meeting had requested. They said, and I quote, "I'm not, I'm going to make a motion that we do not recommend the city take up the MOU, but also recommending that the city council review the off-leash dog code or laws for this particular section of the city to make it a codified amenity for the community." That's pretty clear what that means. However, in the meeting minutes, that was stricken from the record. I don't know why that was stricken from the record, when it was clear that Commissioner Cole said to review the off-leash policies in that area and make it a codified amenity for the community. On, last year, on 4/26, city manager Dave Kiff says, respectfully, "As city manager, I will not be bringing an item to the council following, offering an expansion of any off-leash area into city beaches towards Olive." I don't know how that got stricken from the record. He continued, "However, if any member of the council wishes to do so, they are perfectly entitled to do that with the consent of others, per council policy A6." I respectfully request that you put this on the agenda, so we can talk about this. There's been increased enforcement, as the dredging equipment is being removed for Dog Beach. There's been increased enforcement, trying to keep people off of Dog Beach. We're talking about 20 feet that people need to get from Newport side into Dog Beach. I would ask that you allow them to do that without harassment. Thank you.
You're next, speaker.
I want to second everything everybody just said so far. I'm resident of Costa Mesa, my family's here in Newport. I'm a dog trainer, dog behavior worker, and Dog Beach is very important to me.
Or what's your name for the record?
Brendan Golia, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a dog trainer. I want to address Diane. How's Hardy doing, by the way? How's your dog doing? I actually trained him. We never met, your husband's there, and he's a nice gentleman. And if he didn't have the issues he has, I know he would very much enjoy Dog Beach, like most of my clients do. I have hundreds across the whole county, many in Newport, and it's a place that you can't work with dogs the same way as you can work in other environments. You can't go to a dog park, you can't go to other places that are public, you can't possibly socialize the same way. You just can't exercise a dog the same way, and it's a jewel that you guys have here that is, in my opinion, by far better than Huntington's offering, and it's safer. So I would take advantage of it and show it off more, however, with safety, and show the right way to do it. It doesn't seem like it's, it makes any sense what's going on back and forth here with, it seems like there's some deception involved, and some confusion, and threatening. I've basically been following Mike on the internet for a while, and it's, I'm only here because of him, because it's concerning. I have a lot of trainer friends, a lot of clients that are here that would love to be here, but they just cannot. I happen to be down the way in Laguna and have time on my way home to come and talk to you guys, so I really wanted to address my concern. It's a very valuable tool for me and my clients, who all have dogs they love very much, and I would hope that after you guys think about it a little bit more, we can leave it open and possibly enhance it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Scott Hoffman. I live on Balboa Island. I've lived there for approximately 20 years, and I've been a dog owner for the last 12 years, and I'd like to see the city council put the possibility of getting Dog Beach on the agenda as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Vic Leipzig. I'm not a resident of the beautiful city of Newport Beach. I'm one of your neighbors from up the highway and on the other side of the river, in Huntington Beach. I'm here representing the National Audubon Society, or rather, its Orange County chapter called Sea and Sage Audubon Society, with two messages. One is to thank the city, and in particular, City Manager Dave Kiff, for meeting with Audubon representatives and representatives of other environmental organizations and wildlife agencies just last week in regard to the snowy plover habitat site further down the beach. I understand that was a very successful meeting I was unable to attend, but we, as the Audubon Society, look forward to working with the city and your residents to get a resolution of some of the conflict issues there in the areas of D and E Street. On the other hand, my second message has to do with the mouth of the Santa Ana River. The Audubon Society is vigorously opposed to the County of Orange changing its current ordinances prohibiting dogs at the mouth of the Santa Ana River. It is not a Dog Beach now, and it should not become a Dog Beach in the future. It is my personal view that if you were to look up and down the entire 40-mile coastline of Orange County, California, to look for a place to put a Dog Beach, the worst single spot, from a habitat point of view, that you could possibly pick would be the mouth of the Santa Ana River. It has on the Huntington Beach side, the lease turn nesting colony, and on the Newport side, there is established critical habitat area for the western snowy plover, immediately on either side of these two areas, immediately on either side of the mouth of the Santa Ana River. And the river channel itself is critical habitat for both of those species. The lease turns actually forage in the river itself when there's water in it. And in fact, many don't recall, as I do for so long ago, that when Caltrans rebuilt the bridge between our two cities many decades ago, Caltrans was required to actually mitigate for the expansion of the bridge because it was wider than the old bridge and it covered some of the surface of the river. And as a result of covering the surface of the river or blocking the ability of turns to use that water surface for foraging, Caltrans was required to mitigate for that impact on the California lease turn and endangered species. The channel itself is of great importance, both the lease turn and the western snowy plover. We are joined, in our view, on this issue by other local environmental organizations, as well as wildlife agencies, such as the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the California Coastal Commission, and the California Department of Parks and Recreation. We look for your support in finding better solutions than a Dog Beach at the mouth of the Santa Ana River. My own community of Huntington Beach has a wonderful Dog Beach further up the coastline, as you know, where there are no such habitat impacts and where dog users are very welcome. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Angel Lee. I live in Costa Mesa, right by Triangle Square, up 19th Street. I have a dog that I love very much. His name is Jamison. He's actually five years old, and he's been going to Newport Dog Beach since he was born. He loves that place. It's his home way from home. I take him there to socialize with other dogs. He loves to exercise there. But lately, we can't go on the beach or else we'll get a ticket. So I've been walking him every day to the Back Bay, which takes two hours. And even with the two hours that I walk him, he has a ton of energy, which I can't give him with the two-hour walk that I give him every day. He needs to be in the water, swimming with his friends. He just needs exercise, and I feel like Dog Beach gives him that exercise that he needs. I feel that we need to bring it back because we have a community that loves taking their dogs there. Nothing's ever bad happened there, like no dogs attacking each other. It's a good community, very friendly, and I feel that we should bring it back. And I want to voice this for my dog because he can't speak up for himself, and he loves it, and he misses it every day. So please, bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi there. My name's Phil Guston. I was born in Oak Hospital in Newport Beach, grew up here my whole life for 30 years. This is my first time coming to City Hall or City Council, and I'm here because I am in very big support of this issue. And I want to, you know, make the dog park official, as it has been for 100 years unofficially, and people have been going there for 100 years, taking their dogs off leash, playing. Since it's come up so often, and Mike Glenn's done a good job of communicating this out to the community, I'm in full support of him and his cause. So first, I'm sure more than half of you in this room have owned a dog at some point in your life. I, myself, have had four since I was born. Other than having children, owning a dog is one of the best things to enjoy in life. They're always there for you, to give you unconditional love, lighten your day after hard day's work, and give you companionship when it's needed. So dogs are an important part of people's lives, and for their kids, they help shape their appreciation and respect for animals. Now, I'm also here, or I'm also sure that each and every one of you like the water and the beach, which is a big part of why you all live in Newport Beach. So imagine being a dog, so imagine being a dog and having a family that takes them out to a beach that is basically Dog Disneyland, to enjoy throwing the ball, playing in the water and sand, and playing with each other. It's dog heaven. When I heard that someone is trying to shut the place down and ticket owners, I knew it wasn't right, and I had to come down and express my opinion, ask some simple questions. Why are you looking to shut it down? What is going to go in its place, since nothing else can be built there? Who approved the sudden enforcement against dogs in the park? If the reason is money, I'm sure we could get, you know, enough donations to build out a nice section at trashcans, have a community support to help clean it up, and also create a good entrance. To summarize, since dogs are such a big part of our lives, I think it's very important to ensure we save the last area they can go play freely in Newport Beach that is not being used for anything else, and to ensure they are fulfilled, which makes their owners happy and everyone is able to live a happy life to their fullest. By shutting down the Dog Beach or literally closing doors on something that's been in place for 100 years, but most importantly, a part of happiness in not only the dogs, but also their owners and children. So keeping the theme of this year going on, let's make Newport Beach great again, or Newport Beach Dog Beach great again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Sharon Ray. Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. I just wanted to take note of the fact that I'm rather impressed by how many young people are here tonight and how many people, young people, have come out to speak on this issue. It's, well, all of our futures matter. The kids are what, or the younger people, our future leadership, our future survival, all of it. And Dog Beach has really captured their interest. Newport Beach is for all of us, not just people who've lived here for 50 years, but the people coming forward. I would ask the council to really listen very carefully to how they feel about it because I have seen them come out in record numbers for this issue. It is important to a significant part of our community, and a valuable part. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Laura Fairman. I've lived and worked in Orange County, Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, for my entire life. And sorry, I'm not super excited about speaking in public, so that's how much this means to me. It's a great place. It's a place where in this generation, where kids have their faces stuck in their iPhone that you can go and you can enjoy, and you can meet people and smile, and people interact with each other, and you can appreciate nature. And I think it's an integral part of what the city is about. It's a special, special place. And again, if there's issues that we can, you know, work around to make it work, I think it's really important. And it's a place where my dog, who's a weimaraner, he can go and run and play, where at dog parks, he gets a little bit overwhelmed by dogs and sits in a corner and doesn't have that same special nature about it, the joy of running, splashing the water, and, you know, talking with other dog lovers, talking with surfers. And I just think it's a really important, special place to keep going, if you guys can help us with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Mayor, councilmembers, staff. My name is Dennis Bress. I live on Balboa Island, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I am the proud owner of this three-year-old Turkish congle named Gypsy Rose. And I appreciate Mike Glenn's participation in this process. I was a little confused due to the fact that we were here last year, and I believe the process was that staff had recommended you guys not support Dog Beach, and then we had a whole bunch of people show up here and made the case to you guys that River Jetties is a great spot for Dog Beach and that in order to make it legal for us, because at that point, we actually had our city dog catcher and/or police that were going down to River Jetties and enforcing tickets, when we had up at Buck Gully, like a coyote problem, and people were wondering why it was that you guys were down there ticketing people on county property, when the resources could have been better served up there in other places in town, like Buck Gully. Anyways, we made the case to you guys, which was a compelling case, that you guys voted, I believe, seven-zero, to be able to then kick it back to the county in order that it would be the county's responsibility then to take it upon them to officially then dedicate that area as a lease-free dog zone or Dog Beach. And then they had to, I think they had one vote, and then they tabled it for a review on what the other gentleman was talking about, the gnat catcher area, which is over on the Huntington Beach side, which seemed kind of unreasonable due to the fact that's all fenced in and dogs don't go up there anyways. So I thought that was just a process they were going through. And then I get the notice that Diane Dixon had, I guess, communicated on Newport Beach Letterhead that she was opposing Dog Beach. So I don't know if that's her personal view or if that's now the council's view, but I guess what I'm asking for at this particular point is if the process is for you guys to, I guess, bring it back so that we have ample time to yet again marshal a bunch of people who have to, you know, take off early from work and, you know, aren't home with their families for dinner, et cetera, so that we can then come back? And then is it that process that we get you guys to agree again to move it back to the county? So I'm not too sure what the clarity is. Maybe you can clarify that for me. Anyways, I'm completely for Dog Beach, and I hope we can finally get this wonderful, you were talking, Brad, earlier about being out and sailing, and yes, Saturday and Sunday was spectacular. And if you guys are dog owners and go to Dog Beach, those people are enjoying the same things down there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Jenny Stokely. I am a current resident of Huntington Beach. I moved down here from Northern California, moved to Newport Beach, and now Huntington. Since I was a baby, we've been coming down here vacationing. The jetty has always been a place for dogs. We came down here to visit my aunt and uncle. We take the dogs there. It was never an issue. Wildlife was never an issue. As far as what I've researched and been told, all of the wildlife around there is still thriving and doing good. The jetty is dirty water. It flows right by the poop plant. People that bring their kids down there sometimes bother me because, "Why would you bring your kid to a poop plant?" The dogs don't care. Most of them eat cat poop. My English Bulldog learned to swim there. I don't know if you guys know this. English Bulldogs sink. You have to teach them. I can't take her to Huntington because I can't let her attack the waves because it might drown her. The jetty is her happy place. I really hope that you guys support it. And Ms. Dixon, I know you're getting bashing from us. I didn't know what was going to happen, but I hope that you turn around and support it so that we can turn around and support each other. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, councilmembers. I guess the first thing I should say, well, you know my name, George Schroeder. I do have dogs. I've had two dogs in the city of Newport Beach. I go to dog parks. I go to the, I went to this dog park up here, the one in Costa Mesa, and the dog park on the beach in Huntington Beach. So you would think I have a bias to wanting this location. Oh, and I have my dog on the beach often, you know, four or five days a week. Every beach is a Dog Beach. There are no signs that say, "No dogs." They say, "No dogs between 10:00 a.m. and 4:30." So 365 days a year, every beach in the city of Newport Beach is Dog Beach, okay? And where I live, on 35th Street, I take my dog to the beach, I run along the beach for the leash, and a dog. Some people drop their leash, they're running along the waves, you know, the dog is close by, but, you know, if a policeman saw them, he could possibly ticket them, okay? But, so, every dog, you know, every family, anybody who comes to Newport Beach can take all of their dogs to the beach. So let's, you know, keep that straight, not say there are no dogs on the beach. That's ridiculous. Okay? And then also, I'm president of the West Newport Beach Association. Last September, I got a call from somebody named Bruce. He wanted to come to a board meeting and talk about this particular issue. So I said, "You can come down and talk." Michael Glenn came down also and spoke. I think most of you know who Mike Glenn is. He's a very forceful, very good speaker, so he did present his case. Bruce presented his case, why he thought it wasn't a good idea to have this area called Dog Beach have dogs off-leash there. I have 10 people on my board. Craig Batley, who some of you know, owns an oceanfront home, 5,600 block. Mike Johnson has two dogs. He lives down there. Most of his own dogs. At the end of the day, after listening to both arguments, I was surprised, but there was a 10-0 vote that this is not a good place to have dogs off-leash. It's not a safe place. I've heard people say, "It's a great place for dogs. It's safe." All of you know that's not true. You have people making emotional arguments, not telling the correct information. You all know a dog died there last year. A, you know, and then also, just like this last speaker spoke, you know, would you want the junior lifeguards to put tents and take kids there? Because toxics and all kinds of stuff just runs down out of the riverbed into the ocean all the time. My friends who surf there, they said they get ear infections because it's not really clean. And then, and then most importantly, okay, nobody is going to Dog Beach. I was there last night at 7:00. I have pictures on my iPhone. There was one dog on Dog Beach, six dogs on the city of Newport Beach, beach, off-leash, running around, because nobody knows where the county land is. Okay? So they're all like 100, 200 feet down, halfway up the sand, off-leash, running their dogs on the city of Newport Beach. If the county, and I don't know why they're not at the County of Orange, talking to the supervisors, because it's the county area, if the county area wants to make that terrible place where it's not safe for your dogs to go because of the toxics and stuff and where dogs drown, if they want to make that a lease-free area and give access to it, they should. Thank you.
Thank you, Schroeder. Excuse me, folks, there were no comments from the back. We'll stop this meeting and we'll have a long recess. Sir, I'm talking to you with a hat on. Thank you. Yes. Next speaker.
I'm Terri Quam, Costa Mesa. I thought we went through this already and we're back. Why are we doing this again? I understand because Councilmember Dixon has decided that the birds on either side of the riverbed are in danger. Well, we just heard from Sea and Sage that they're not. They're thriving colonies. Obviously, the dogs are not bothering them. The dogs haven't been bothering them. They've been there for years. So I don't know why all of a sudden this is an issue. She voted in favor of banning ranch. She didn't care about Escha then, so now it's all of a sudden an issue. Can we please resolve this once and for all in favor of Dog Beach and the majority of the people that care about it? Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. My name's Lino Burado, West Newport. I'm here in favor of Dog Beach. Like you, I've heard all the same arguments tonight, and I just want you to know, irrespective of the water quality or the birds, that's not really a natural area anymore, right? There's a parking lot right next to the lease turns or the snowy plovers. There's houses all along the beach. That is an urban river that empties right there. This isn't the Grand Canyon we're talking about. It's just a place where we all love to take our dogs. They're safe because they're in between the two rocks. We don't have to worry about them getting in the street. I know there's homeowners there. I have friends who, I live close by, and I have friends who live there who are not in I know there's homeowners there. I have friends who, I live close by and I have friends who live there who are not in favor of Dog Beach. And I understand why. But that's serving very few people as compared to how many people enjoy, enjoy a day at Dog Beach. I really hope that you'll, you'll look at that issue and I want you to know too, uh, I, I appreciate what you all do. I know it's not easy being on the city council and good luck with all of this.
Thank you.
Uh, city council members, my name is Bruce Boyd. Um, I represent about a hundred households in West Newport and some environmental organizations. And the reason that I'm here is we were alerted to a website, Save Newport, Save Dog Beach, whatever, that, uh, basically has misrepresented some facts. Um, as a thirty-year dog owner, along with many of the households in, uh, West Newport, we are not anti-dog, but we're pro-environment. Uh, so my goal tonight here is to present some facts, um, to talk about what we're doing here. The Dog Beach area is misrepresented on the website. There is no official Dog Beach area. It's, it's not there. It is a federally designated environmentally sensitive habitat area. Nothing we can do about that, nothing that you guys can do about that either. Um, you have about six hundred pages of information, of letters, um, and documents from people and organizations such as Fish and Wildlife, United States Fish and Wildlife, California Fish and Game and the Coastal Commission. All of them for the environment and against designating a Dog Beach in that area. It's also, as has been pointed out earlier, a flood control zone. And we have lost a dog already due to excessive runoff in the area. A dog was killed and that could have been a person. We were lucky at that particular point in time. So I think, uh, the question we have to ask is why are we having these issues? Uh, and I think part of this is because of the misrepresentation on the website and why, why that's being misrepresented like that. I think the people that are dog owners, they, they all love their dogs. Everybody, we all love our dogs. But they're here because they don't really understand what the real issues are. And it, as was designated earlier, this is an emotional issue for everybody that has a dog and there's a lot of deception and confusion and I would submit that most of that is caused by this website. So why, why Mr. Glenn does that, uh, you know, who knows? Uh, he was an unsuccessful council candidate in the recent election. Maybe he wants to set himself up for, for a new election. I have no idea. But all this does, all his website does is take dog owners and pit them against the city council, against the County of Orange and against all the neighborhood people that live in the area. That's what they do. So you have recent information that we gave you today. You have six hundred pages that you already have from these groups. City manager, Mr. Kiff, has already met with organizations to figure out how the city can best comply with the rules and regulations of this particular area. Um, and what our understanding is right now is that, that the County of Orange will no longer support this area as a designated Dog Beach. It's not going to come up on the agenda anymore. It's done. It is not happening because of the, all the consideration for the environment and the rest of the, uh, the rest of the official areas. So if I, if we can supply any further information to provide facts or give you any information, I think facts are key. And when you recognize that, um, the issue's done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sorry, my heart's beating out of my chest. My name's Lori Barado and, um, I am confused. I don't understand. I was here at the last meeting, heard it on the Channel Eleven morning news that it was going to be legal now. We weren't going to get a ticket. I've lived across the street for almost thirty years. The only people that go to Dog Beach or the, the beach between the rocks are owners and their dogs. I never let my kids go down there, ever, because that water is gross. And who would want to be there but dogs? And so I am confused because at the last meeting, what came up was some, there were a couple owners of homes and they had taken pictures of dog piles. And, um, and that was their complaint and parking, which parking's not going to change whether dogs are there or people are going to the beach. Parking at the beach is terrible. We all know that. We live with it. The other thing was the dog piles. The same people that don't pick up their Dorito wrappers are the same rude people that don't pick up their dog piles. It's people. It's a few bad people. There's a few bad apples in everything. That doesn't change and that shouldn't take away where we take our dogs to play. And I've only had a dog for a couple of years now, but it never bothered me thirty years having those dogs down there. So what? No one uses that store, that drainage and the birds. I don't get what the big hoopla about the birds is now because the birds have been there and the dogs have been there for at least thirty years that I've lived across the street. So I don't, I don't get what the big confusion is now and why so many people enjoy that area and it's, no one wants it but the dogs and their owners. No one else wants to go there. So that's just my, sorry, I'm not eloquent, but I just don't understand. I thought this was over. There were so many people here last time and it's just confusing when it goes back and forth and back and forth. And I thought this was taken care of. I thought it was done, especially since I heard it on the news. So I guess there is fake news. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next speaker, please. Any other speakers on this topic and, or any other non-agenda items to be discussed? Okay. Seeing none. Just for some background, factually, so some people have asked good questions about, oh, what is going on? Would you please give an explanation?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, to the best of my knowledge. As I understand it, the, the County of Orange was proceeding down a path of a first reading and a second reading to allow the, uh, area at the mouth of the Santa Ana River to be a legally designated off-leash area. The county did not have second reading of the ordinance and allegedly that's in part because a number of envi- of conservation groups, including the Coastal Commission, weighed in and said that the environmental review isn't adequate and there could be a, uh, tendency on the Coastal Commission to actually deny that kind of use were that to go through a coastal development permit process. It's my understanding that the county, uh, Board of Supervisors has since tabled the item indefinitely. So, um, this is, it's not, the city didn't have a dog in that fight, uh, so to speak. But what we do have is we have the beach and near the area, which, um, the folks, the, the dog owners and the dogs would transit our area to reach the Dog Beach and that was continuing. Then we had the dredging project, which, um, at least for a period of time, uh, removed access entirely from the Newport side because of the depth of the, the water. Although sand's been coming back and I think at low tide, you could probably cross that area. So, um, certainly I, I feel like I'm, we're kind of in a bind. We have a law and the law is, is in the municipal code that says that a person on Newport's beaches always has to have their dog on a leash. And in addition to that, they can't be on any beach between ten and four thirty. So, um, it's my obligation to enforce that. We did, um, go ahead and put up some new signage. Um, I think it's fairly friendly signage. They're on A-frames. And it basically is reminding folks of the, the law on the Newport side. And it doesn't say anything about the county side and that's kind of where we are today. So this is not on your agenda today, but, um, it, I, I know the city attorney, if you had, you know, brief questions about that, um, I can answer what the city's been doing. I did attend a meeting at, at the Conservation Group's request last Friday. It was actually supposed to be about the western snowy plover area down on the peninsula. And they brought up the, the dog area, the Dog Beach area. Um, the, some of the staff there from the Coastal Commission raised a concern to me that we were not at, we city, we're not adequately protecting the dune area on the Newport side. And it, to refresh your memory, the dune area kind of starts with a bunch of ice plant and it's near the homes and it heads down, um, probably, you know, several blocks. And they, they had a concern that, um, off-leash dogs were getting into that dune area and potentially damaging that. Now, that's not to say any, they weren't, they didn't have an opinion that I can remember about the open beach area and the surf area. So, um, I encourage them, if they had a concern, to send us a friendly letter. I would always like a friendly letter versus an NOV, um, to clarify what they believe the proper care of that dune area is because it is on city lands. So I think that gets you up to speed.
Will we be enforcing our ordinances on county property?
No.
Thank you. All reports from city council on committee activities. Mr. O'Neil.
None.
Mr. Piattar. Mrs. Dixon.
None.
Mr. Hurdman. Mr. Avery.
None.
Mayor Portem Duffield. I have none. Now we're moving on to public hearing. Item fifteen, Community Development Block Grant, was brought back from the prior council meeting. Staff.
Mayor, members of the city council, this item was continued from the prior meeting. Um, so we gave a presentation at the prior meeting. I can go through the funding allocations, um, again, if you would like. Uh, the questions at the last meeting were raised about the, the Section 108 loan that we have and we've subsequently provided that information. It's in the, the packet and I can go through that if you would like. A little more detail, but it is in that report. Um, staff is recommending, uh, that the city council adopt the action plan that's before you with one change that I highlighted the last meeting, or maybe Clint Whited did. But we want to combine those two ADA projects into one project. And with that change, staff recommends adoption of the action plan with that change.
I'm not sure about my colleagues, but I would like to know what we've learned since our last question.
Well, what we've, staff hasn't necessarily learned anything new, but we've provided a good summary of the 108 loan, which was really the big question of the day. And I think it had to do with, uh, the fact that we did have, um, some additional funds this year that resulted from the sale of the Balboa Theater, approximately a million dollars. Uh, we do have a, a loan that's outstanding that's, um, um, secured by the future grant. And the thought would be, well, possibly could we pay that off? And, uh, we researched that question, uh, and in the summary, we can't prepay that loan. Um, so we're obligated to continue paying on the amortization set, excuse me, the amortization schedule that is provided. Um, so in, in this case, uh, without that opportunity, uh, we're looking to allocate those funds with other projects from prior years toward an ADA project. That's the largest project at about one point two million dollars. And with that, I can answer any other questions that you might have about the loan or about the program.
Yeah, the question I had last time was, uh, what was the rate before refinancing? When did we refinance and what is the rate after?
Mayor Muldoon, I have this memo, so I, I can, I'll just jump ahead. Uh, excuse me, jump ahead here. So the original loan that the city had was refinanced in fiscal year 2015, which lowered the average interest rate from six point five percent to one point five percent, which reduced the total remaining interest payments by two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, nine hundred and ninety-eight. The, um, economic gain on the refinancing is one hundred and eighty-seven, six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and the present, which is the present value difference between the old and the new debt service schedules. So our future principal payments are going to range anywhere from a hundred and sixty-nine thousand to two hundred and eight thousand dollars. And our outstanding balance as of June thirtieth, twenty seventeen will be one million and sixty-six thousand dollars.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Those are the numbers.
Yeah, those are astounding numbers. Any comments or questions from the dais? All the comments? All right. Seeing none. I'll move the item. Grab a motion and a second by Council Piattar. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions to reconsider? Seeing none. We are adjourned.